At 6:45, we do have a quorum present. We appreciate each and every one of you here this evening. But the best part about it, we're going to have our middle school here as a presentation for us this evening, which is going to be the best. And to start off, they're going to lead us into pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, one invisible with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you, ladies.
The board mission statement, philosophy in the middle school district educates every student to be a lifelong learner, a person of integrity, and a positive contributor to society.
The first item is, we have the presentation of the School First presentation. Mr. Quan?
Yes, Mr. Carroll is going to give us our presentation.
If I remember, this is something we have to do every year. We put the notice in the paper for this public hearing at the appropriate time. Today, we're just going to go over the criteria. This is basically the rating system that they use to kind of judge, engage the financial health or stability of school districts. Sit around for a while, then look through the PowerPoint and go through the criteria. And then we'll just go back, jump back to the other required things that are meant to be reported on this, to this hearing. Just real quick on the PowerPoint. And of course, the purpose, the main thing to look at this is, is to look at the effectiveness and the efficiency of school districts, and look at their financial status, and look at any things that might think that there might be, have any issues financially, and give them a chance to correct them. Effectively and efficiently, and the ability to prove that things are going. It's been around since 1999. Remember, the dates are kind of confusing. We're in 2021, but this data was from the 1920 fiscal year, 2019, 2020. I get in trouble for saying 1920. 2019, 2020 year. So everything's always kind of a year behind. And then, this is just showing the ratings, which is basically like a regular report card, but you have to get a 70 to pass. Last year, you only needed a 60 to pass. This year, you have to have a 70 to pass. And then talking about the indicators, the things that they look at, that you can earn points or indicate your financial health. There's 19 scored indicators this year, up from 15 last year. And then there's a new thing called a ceiling indicator. And I'll talk about what those are. There's four critical indicators. Those are the very first ones. If you don't pass one of those indicators, you automatically get an F for the year on your report card. But we'll go with those real quick. And then the new ceiling indicators, there's some other questions now that if you don't pass them, then the maximum you can get, there's one if you don't pass it, the maximum you can get is 89 points, which is a B, if you flunked that or don't pass that one indicator. There's about, there's six of those ceiling indicators this year now, too. And we'll go through them real quickly. The critical indicators, and these are, these are big ones, but they're also, they make a lot of sense. Did you get your audit done in time? Did you get your audited data submitted to TEA by the deadline? Yes, you have, I believe it's six months after your fiscal year end to get your audit done and get your stuff submitted. We submitted our stuff on time. We submitted ours on January the 15th. So we completed our audit for that year on time. And then the other one, did you get an unmodified opinion, which means, did you get a satisfactory audit? The auditor was able to say that your financial statements accurately portrayed your financial status. So we received an unmodified opinion for our audit for that fiscal year 20, so we passed that one. And then the next two critical ones, they ask, that's a pretty indicate, pretty clear indicator. If you've met all your debt payments for the year, then you automatically pass. Obviously, if you don't make some of your debt payments, then you've got some kind of financial problem. And then also, were you timely in all the, all the payments that you have to make to government agencies, TRS, the Workforce Commission, IRS, other governmental people? You have to be on time with that. We were on time with that, so we passed that. And that's one of the indicators. If you don't pass that, the highest you can make is a B. Indicator number five is still on there, but it's not being scored anymore. And then we get to the rest of the indicators. The first one, this is a new one. They're asking for your fund balance over the year. If your fund balance, they're basically saying, that would help. They're basically saying, you know, over three years, if your fund balance looks like it's dropping, then that could be an indicator that maybe you've got some problems. But they also say, if your fund balance does drop, as long as you've got enough, as long as you've got enough fund balance to cover 75 days of operation, you'll still pass. But thankfully, over these three years, our fund balance actually went up an average of 35%. So we don't have to worry about that anymore. So we passed that one, and we passed the ceiling indicator on that one, too. Then number seven, that's looking at your cash on hand. They want to know if you, if you take your cash, how many numbers of days of cash on hand did you have at the end of the year? We had 160, a little over 161 days of cash on hand. You get the maximum 10 points if you've got, if you've got 90 days. So we're well above the 90 days to get the maximum amount of points on this indicator. So we got all 10 points on this one. Then they're looking at your current assets to your current liabilities. Current li, your current assets are basically, is basically your money in the bank, and your current liabilities is basically what you owe on your debt for the next year, everything you owe for the next year. And they're looking at that ratio, and our ratio is 3.5. So that means for every, for every, for every $3.50 of cash that we have, or current assets, we had $1 of debt. That just shows the ratio. We had way more current assets than current liabilities. So we got all 10 points of those. You get, you get all 10 points if you're over 3, and we're at 3.5. So we're over the amount that you get the maximum points for this indicator, which is good. Then number nine, then they're asking about if your general fund revenues exceeded your expenditures. And that just means, you know, did you have more revenue than you had expenses? And normally, that's, that's a good thing, and normally, we do have that. And so we did pass this because for that year, we did happen to have more revenues than expenditures. But even if you don't have more revenues than expenditures, if you have, you could have a year where you want, you might be spinning down your fund balance for some other one-time reason or something. Even if you do that, you can still get, you can still get all 10 points if you've got enough cash in the bank, more than 90 days of cash in the bank. But we, for this year in particular, we did have more revenues than expenditures, so we got all 10 points. We passed this, this indicator with the full point, babe. Then number 10, now they're looking at, this is a new one. Now they're, now they're asking you to look at whatever you budgeted for revenues. Did your actual revenues come within 10% either of, above or over what you budgeted for revenues? Thankfully, ours did come in. We were only, the average of the, of the year, for the last three years was only 0.2. 0.2, so that means 2/10 of 1%. That's the variance that we had on our revenues. So in that case, we passed that. This is an all or nothing indicator. You either did it or you didn't. So since we did have only that small variance of our revenues to our actual revenues, we got all 10 points for this one. And then 11, now they're looking at long-term liabilities, your ratio of long-term liabilities to your total assets. And remember, this is for the government-wide financials. So we put our, we put our, all our buildings and everything that we, that we have value in minus depreciation plus all our long-term debt. And when you do that, this is the closest one. When you compare that ratio, it's a 0.5644. And as long as you're under a 0.6, you get all 10 points. We're really, really close to that, that indicator, but we still get all 10 points because our ratio is still below the one that you get all the 10 points on. And then number 12, was the debt per $100 of assessed property values sufficient to meet future debt payments? That's just the way they look at your, they're going to look at your general, I mean, your debt service fund. That's our voter-approved debt that we pay for out of the Fund 599. So they're just looking at that to see if you've got enough fund balance and you're collecting enough to meet your debt obligations that you have in the future. And so when you take that calculation, we're, our debt for 100, we're at the, I'm sorry, I'm at the wrong one. Where did the 0.5? I'm sorry. Then the next one is the school district administrative cost ratio. That's where they come up with a cost, they come up with a pre-determined cost ratio based upon the size of your district. We fall into the category of district enrollment of 1,000 to 4,999. When you look at that ratio, if you're below 0.1151, you get all 10 points, and we're only at 0.09. So that just means our, our Function 41, which is our administrative functions, and our Function 21, our percentage of that cost is lower compared to, that means our budget, we're mostly Function 11, you know, it's the ones that actually count towards, you know, in the school with the students. So since we have such a low cost ratio for our administrative functions, we get all 10 points for that one. And then on 14, I think that's a, this is the one where they look at your student-to-staff ratio. And as long as your student-to-staff ratio is staying constant, you'll, you'll earn the points on this. Our student-to-staff ratio did drop just a little bit over the three years, but we still pass this indicator and get all 10 points because we did not have more than a 15% decline in our student-to-staff ratio. And then number 15, this is a new one. This is the one where we have to go in there and certify either what TA is projecting our enrollment to be. We either have to certify that, or we have to go in there and put our own estimated enrollment. And so whatever, whatever we, I believe I just accepted what TA had said because thankfully, we do not have massive changes in our enrollment. We've had the normal decline from COVID and things like that, but we're not a fast, rapid growth district. So whatever we said our enrollment was going to be, we were within the indicator, within the small percentage to say that we get all 10 points for this indicator. And then number 16, this is the one where they compare, when we're done with the audit, we send all our data, we send all our audit data to the state. And then during the year, we submit data periodically through the PEMS process. So they, they compare that and say, is what you submitted through PEMS, how does it reconcile or how close is it to what you sent in your audit? Thankfully, we, we always, we're only off like $39 out of 39 million because, that's only because of rounding. So just to kind of give you a perspective, we'd have to be off, I think we'd have to be off like $1.5 million, and we'd still pass this indicator. But I make sure that whatever we submitted PEMS is exactly what the audit says. So we get all, we get all, actually, this one doesn't have points. This is just, you either pass it or you don't pass it. So we passed that indicator. And then 17 is a new one. This is the one where you could still have a good audit, you could still have an unmodified opinion from your auditor, which means your financial statements accurately reflect or materially reflect what your financial status is. But during the audit, an auditor could say, there could be another indication called a material weakness. You still get a good audit, but they might say there's some other area that they see that you need improvement on. And so this question says, did your auditor say you had a material weakness? For that year, we did not have a material weakness. So there's no points with this one, but it's a pass/fail one, and we passed it because we did not have any material weaknesses. And then number 18, kind of the next level, you have unmodified opinion, do you have a material weakness? Then there's another indicator that your auditor, maybe your auditor found something, you know, maybe something on a specific grant or something. Any other thing that they noticed that you might have been out of compliance where they have to say it in the audit. So this question asks, did you have any materials, any material non-compliance issues in your audit? And we did not. So this one, we do get, it's either a yes or no. You either did it or you didn't. So we did not have any non-compliance issues, so we get all 10 points for that. And the last two, these are both new. They look at, oh, this is the one kind of where they look at to see that you've posted everything on your website that you're supposed to have posted. So for that year, we had everything that they were looking for. So we get, that was worth five points. We got all the five points on that one because we had all our stuff posted for that year. And then the last one is, I don't know if you remember, but before, when we had the lag in, when we had the lag in revenue, we had the lag in your certified property values. We had, we were required to meet with y'all and talk, make sure that y'all understood that being a year behind, being a year, using a delayed year in calculating your revenue, well, that's, that doesn't apply anymore. We, we use current certified values to determine the revenue for the current year. So they still say you have to discuss with your board, your property values 120 days before you adopt the budget. But we do that thoroughly when we do the budget workshops because that's one of the key figures that we talk about when we do our revenue, when we're projecting our revenues. So we do discuss property values with y'all before we adopt the budget. So we did that for that year, so we get, we passed that one. So when it comes down to the end, fortunately, this year, we got a perfect score, 100 out of 100, which is nice to do, great that we have that. That shows that we, we're sound financially, and the indicators that they're grading us on, we're under the parent's, we're able to take care of business, we're able to do everything that we need to take care of. And there's nothing in our financial data that indicates that we have any kind of problems or issues. Those are the indicators, and if you go, if you look at the other, other summary report, this is just a summary, kind of, and this is some other data that has to be presented in the first report. I always give a little summary. You can see last year, the year before, we got a 98. This year, we got 100. I kind of show what some of the other areas, school districts, what their ratings are. And then you can see a summary on page two. It really kind of shows you that of all of, I think there's 1,000 and, I don't know, like 1,100 or 1,200 school districts, relatively few get an F. Most of the districts, the majority, 98.73% of the districts this year got, passed it, and 82% get As, which is a 90-year vote. And then one of the criteria first is our contracts for our superintendent have to be on, have to be either in the report or on the website. Those are contracts are on the website. And then there's a report attached with A, you just have to report. We just take the budget for the Board of Trustees, and we just break down the expenses for all the board members and the superintendent during that fiscal year that ended in August of 2020. And so that's what that attached with A is, just to indicate those expenditures. And then we just have to indicate that during the 12-month period of this report, the superintendent didn't receive any professional consulting fees. And then we just have to indicate that the board did not receive any material gifts, and there were no business transactions between board members and the superintendent with the school district, and during this period, there were none. So that concludes the annual first report. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Philip. That's very good that we came up with a couple of points. That's good.
It's great. I don't, I mean, not to, I'm glad that we got 100, but it was two years ago, we had a C because when M&amp;G went bankrupt and they owed us all that money and our cash was low. So there are other external things that can happen to you that can affect this, but we've got to do the best we can to maintain this.
I don't see there, but what year was this again?
The, the, the data and everything is based on the data from the fiscal, the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. So it's the audit from that year, from, from August of 2020. That's where all the data came from. All the, all the information is used to, to make criteria.
Thank you, Philip. That's greatly appreciated. Glad we have a 100. Doing well. Having a public comment, open forum. The next item on the agenda is public comment, public audience, which is the time for members of the audit to address the Board of Trustees, to either public comment or public audience if applicable. Before we begin, I mind our audience members of the Board's procedure for handling public comments. The public comments portion of our regular vote meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address agenda or non-agenda items to be considered by the Board. Anyone who wants to speak during the public comment must sign up prior to the start of the meeting and list the agenda item or non-agenda item subject they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allotted a maximum of three minutes to address the Board. Any public testimony speaker who is speaking through a translator will receive up to five minutes to address the Board. The public addressing tonight's agenda items allows all speakers who have signed up before the start of the meeting to address the Board regarding an item on tonight's agenda. Please keep in mind your comments are criticisms, criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity, refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Last, we ask that you not discuss students who are not your own children. Yelling, inappropriate, uncivil, or discriminatory comments will not be permitted. If you are speaking on an item that, that are not on tonight's agenda, then the following applies to these speakers. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the Board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The Board shall allot no more than 30 minutes for speakers on items not on tonight's agenda. The Board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open forum by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint meeting after the, after the meeting. All comments by person speaking on either agenda or non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker. I also caution you that your public comment should not complain about individual school employees by name or position other than your own child. Identify, identify students pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.074, 551.0821, and 551.082. This presiding officer is obligated to determine whether the person addressing the Board has attempted to administratively resolve any complaints or grievances about which they want to address the Board that involve district officers or employees. In the event your comment, in the judgment of the presiding officer constitutes a complaint or charge against an employee or officer, it may be necessary for me to interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the school district's formal grievance process, or to have the item heard in executive session depending on the nature of the complaint. If a speaker is seeking Board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process, which can be found online and include public policies or in Board policies DG, BA, FNG, and GF. Grievance forms can be obtained at any campus administration office or in the central administration office. Thank you. And our first speaker will be Selena Flores. Ms. Flores?
Good evening. My name is Selena Flores, and I am a lifelong resident of TM, and I have lived and paid taxes on Charles Drive for the last 10 years. My children are currently enrolled in the primary, intermediate, and middle schools. When the school year started, my mother and I began walking my daughter to the primary. Those first few days were tough to navigate as parents became accustomed to the drop-off system. Beginning on July 27th, while in the middle of the crosswalk, a car entered the crosswalk stopping inches from us because the driver was on the phone. The following morning, while in the crosswalk, a different car stopped inches short of hitting my four-year-old daughter. On August 19th, my mother sent an email to the safety superintendent with her concerns, and the reply listed several long-term plans along with a suggestion, and I quote, "Please continue to enter the crosswalk cautiously." We have incidents began on August 19th, 20th, and 23rd. After the incident on the 23rd, we started driving my daughter to school. Now with the nicer weather, my daughter asked to walk to school in the morning, and apprehensively we agreed. Most mornings are thankfully uneventful. However, on the morning of November 10th, after dropping my daughter off, my mother and I stepped into the crosswalk, and we did not see a car coming. Out of nowhere, this white vehicle flies by us so fast that I literally felt the draft of the car. I have footage from school security systems, so you can see for yourselves how quickly the situation went wrong. I emailed the current superintendent on November 10th, who advised, and I quote, "While we cannot control the poor decisions of other drivers, we hope to make positive change. While I expect that changes will be made, how long will you continue to ignore this issue, which already resulted in bodily injury?" In 2018, a fellow neighbor and kindergarten teacher was hit in the crosswalk on her way to work. Does somebody have to get seriously injured or, God forbid, die for me to do something? With all the educated minds in this room, is there not any solution that can be implemented? For instance, in front of the primary, there is a sign that states, "State law to yield within crosswalk." Why can't there be a sign, a person standing on the side of Charles where the issue is occurring? Or maybe high school students who need community service points can come, crossing guards, or even the watchdogs? Where is the money from the safe route to school being used? I have done an interview with the media in the hopes that this will encourage you to look into the situation a little quicker than you have. I believe TM has been in the media enough, but you left me no choice, so I hope that collectively you will be able to solve the situation before it becomes tragic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sylvia Henderson.
Good afternoon. My issue is the same. She's my neighbor. And I got the signatures from all the neighbors in Stonewell Drive and near Van, so we can have the speed bumps. This issue could have avoided two, three years ago while I was through cancer treatment. I submitted a paperwork to the assistant superintendent. At that time, it was Mr. Gargi, the superintendent, and I gave the paperwork to his assistant. Nothing was done. The school is the responsible for this. It's in the best interest of the school, the safety of the kids, and the parents. Nothing was done. It's your dad's job to have this done. What needs to happen? Do we need the kids to get hurt, a parent to die, a kid to die? I don't think so. I've been living over here 11 years. The only speed bump next to the primary is the one that I work for, is the one that I make sure I had built because I had an eight-year-old, a five-year-old, and I was pregnant with one. And I was worried because I did my kids and my neighbor's kids. And I'm from Mexico, third world country, and I make sure that had a speed bump. This is the U.S. My kids were in Cal Island. There's speed bumps everywhere over there in the schools. Why there's no speed bumps on any of the schools over here? Why not? Same, there's a little form that the superintendent needs to sign, and they are made right away at the beginning of the year. There's a budget for $25,000, and you have to put it in right away. So they allocate that money for the Tulosso, Middleway schools, and they can do it for the middle school, the intermediate, and the primary. And that's all you all need to do. Fill out the form, and you can do it right away. But in the meantime, we need crossing guards. You need to do your part. You need to get ready from the parents, get volunteers, get the PTA involved, and do your job, please. If you're not, if you're not doing your job, what are you here for? Period. Do your job. Get the PTA involved, get the background check, get the parents involved. That's what you're here for. Do your job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Henderson, Ms. Flores. We move into our discussion. I made a recognition. I made a recognition.
As you know, we've just had Veterans Day, and we thank the campuses so much for honoring our veterans, especially those in our community and our employees who are veterans. And we have two here on the school board who have served our country, Mr. Landin and Mr. Mostella, and they each have baskets with special patriotic cookies, and so that everyone can celebrate that's in the board. You each have a cookie as well, so I hope you will enjoy that. We have photographs of our veterans in the back, and we, we thank you for your service. It's our pleasure to honor you tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now move on to discussion action items. One of our favorite things, we had a campus showcase.
This is Ms. Audius, principal at.
First of all, thank you for allowing us to come and share a little bit about middle school. We are so proud. When they told me you only have ten minutes, I tried to wrap up as much as we could, but there's so many wonderful things at the middle school that I want to tell you about. So first, campus administration. I'm Ms. Audius, campus principal. I've been in education for twenty years. Eight of them have been in admin, two of them here as the campus principal. I also have Ricardo Chapa, who'll just say twenty-plus years of experience in education. And then we have Ms. Tierney, who did fourteen years as an intermediate teacher, as a reading teacher, and two years as a middle school assistant principal. And our new assistant principal, Damian St. John, who has been twenty years, served as a biology teacher for twenty years at Flower Bluff High School. So we want to welcome him. One of the things I want to say about our admin team is you will see us in the mornings, cafeteria duty, lunch duty. You will see us everywhere. We are visible. The kids even ask, hey, is Mr. Chapa here today? Is Ms. Tierney here today? They notice, and we take great pride in that, so I want to share that with you. So thank you, admin team, for doing your job and walking around, and visibility is crucial, especially with our middle school students. Staff. We have eighty-six total staff members, and one of the big things that we have on our campus, we emphasize a lot of building relationships with our students. We know that it is a unique group of students, so it's important for us to be visible, to be talking to the students. How's your day going? What's going on? Because we know that if you're high into that, they're going to perform and they're going to do well for us. Grade levels, sixth through eighth grade. We have a total of eight hundred and forty-four students on campus. Our mission statement, we will provide a safe and nurturing environment emphasizing respect, responsibility, perseverance, and performance. Our students will receive a quality education that prepares them for success in high school and beyond. One of the things I wanted to emphasize on that is provide a safe and nurturing environment. We strive to provide quality education to all our students. Next, our vision statement. The vision of Tuloso Midway Middle Schools for every child to be academically successful. We will ensure that every child develops a love for learning, and we strive to be the school of choice for each student. We have taken a stronger approach this year with our reading and math, in the areas of reading and math. We know that kids have regressed due to COVID, so we are focusing on reading and math to hope, in hopes that we, we have a better, we send a better product to the high school. Next, one of the things that I wanted to showcase was our advisory period. So the way that this started was that last year, we got some teacher input and parent input, and one of our parents on our SBDM committee said, you know, it'd be nice that if kids had a built-in tutorials within the school day. And we thought, you know what? That's a great idea. We worked with Dr. White to implement that this summer. We put it on our master's schedule. So every student has a built-in tutorial period. It is forty-nine minutes, and that is to address the academic need in the areas of reading, math, and science. We also have opportunities for enrichment as well, and that meets our requirements for House Bill forty-five forty-five. During advisories, what we did was we looked at the STAR scores, and we looked at our students, and we looked at their needs, and we assigned them to specific teachers. The other thing we wanted to incorporate was opportunities for enrichment. So we have kids going out, doing some science enrichment, and we'll talk about that on the next slide. The other thing is every student on campus has access, they have access to Reading Plus. So every middle school student has access to Reading Plus. So if you have a middle school student, I would highly encourage you, when they go home this afternoon, ask them about Reading Plus, because we are encouraging the students to do Reading Plus at home as well, because they can do that as, they can, they can access Reading Plus at home. So we had every student take a benchmark to see where they were at the very beginning of the school year. If you notice, that in eighth grade, twenty-six percent of our students in eighth grade are above grade level. You noticed that? And then we have in seventh grade, about twenty-seven percent are on or above grade level, and then in sixth grade, we have twenty, about the same. But if you noticed, we do have a lot of, a large percent of our students are below grade level. So that is what we are focusing on during advisory class. In this Reading Plus program, we purchased last year, we purchased some seats, but this year, we purchased enough for every student. The awesome thing about Reading Plus, it is a computer program. It individualizes, customizes students' lessons. The other thing is they provide incentives and rewards, the actual program does. So to date, this is the progress that we've made. Total words as of November tenth, twenty-three million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and nine. So the average rate gain, twenty-six words per minute, and average level gain is one grade level. This is to date. We also give students weekly kudos awards, and it's funny, because you would think in middle school, they wouldn't want, you know, stickers and pencils and those kinds of things, but every week, last week, we actually forgot, because we were so busy with everything going on. Kids this week were asking us, hey, when are we going to do the kudos awards? So that's awesome. Kids are enjoying doing the Reading Plus. We also give out weekly awards for our top advisory classes. Now, Reading Plus also has competitions amongst the different campuses, different schools in the area, and one of the highlights, one of the most awesome things is that we were, we had a competition called Fall Into Reading, and we scored first amongst all these campuses. The Reading Plus representative came by, took pictures. She gave us a hundred-dollar gift card from Amazon. She says in the spring, they typically give out a trophy, and I said, well, I'm out for the trophy in the spring. So we're working hard, our teachers are working hard in the Reading Plus program. Next, another component of our advisories, we offer our eighth-grade students science enrichment. Our science team has done a great job. They have done awesome in the areas on our STAR test, on our state assessment. So we asked them, what is it that you're doing in the classroom, and what can we do? So they have, we've enlisted them, and they've helped us out to provide science activities that are engaging. So our eighth-grade teachers are providing science enrichment to our eighth-grade students. The other thing we have going on during advisory, Giving Back Friday. We have tribal leaders. These are eighth-grade students who were nominated by teachers. They go in and they mentor our sixth-grade teachers, and they do lessons with them every Friday. We also have, we have a signup sheet, signup sheet for our advisory classes, and we gave them the opportunity to sign up, to go to our adaptive ed classrooms, our special ed classrooms, to go and work with students and actually play games with them. And you'd be amazed, a lot of those classes, they signed up right away. The other thing we have is trash cleanup. So we gave them the opportunity to go around, and we thought, oh, they're not going to want to clean up. No, they did. They really did. They, they went out there, they helped out. We've had several classes go out and help us with that, because we think it's important to give back to the community. The next thing we do is we have social emotional lessons at least once a week. We've had different presentations. We had Master Gonzalez come in, and that's part of our, the end of our presentation. We're going to do a little activity that we did with Master Gonzalez. We also, the other thing I wanted to highlight is the activities we've done at the middle school campus, the outreach activities with the community. We had open house. We had parents express the need. They said, hey, I want to go to campus. I want to actually visit the teacher. So we hosted the open house. One of the things that I came to the board last time on was I proposed that we would help parents get onto the home access center. What do we need to do? So we had Teresa Russell, and that's the picture at the bottom, we had Teresa Russell come out. She helped parents get onto the home access center and troubleshoot any, any problems that the parents were having, because that's an excellent tool. We also have the trunker treat, which was a big success. So we've done a lot of community outreach at the middle school. What's next? So what's next for the middle school? The next thing we're going to do is leveling up. We're, we'll focus on student growth. Teachers will conference with students and do some goal setting. What are we going to do this year on STAR? That is our next theme. We also, we've started to provide, when I talk about enrichment, we've done some tutorials, band region tutorials for those top students that are participating in region band, as well as choir. We're also going to incorporate UIL academics, so students have that opportunity within the school day. We understand our kids are busy, so we have this advisory built into the schedule now. And here are some pictures. I also want to congratulate the eighth-grade A team. They got first place in the Alice Tournament this weekend. So we have so many things going on at middle school. The next thing we're going to do is I wanted to also showcase our middle school mariachi. So they have been practicing for region mariachi, and this is actually, I believe, the second time they've actually been allowed to wear the costumes, this group of students. So this is an opportunity, I wanted them to come out and showcase what they've done. They did have the opportunity to go out to A&amp;M Corpus and look at the, I'm going to say the mariachi de la isla, and so they went and they saw that on Friday. It was a great experience. So I know they're nervous, because this is their first time performing in public. Let them in. Let them in, yeah. Come on, guys. I told them we're on a timer. Come on. eighth, seventh graders. This is their first time, and seventh graders. And the eighth graders, this is their second year. First time these guys have worn the uniform, but I think second time they've worn it ever. And these are seventh and eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders.
Hermoso cariño, hermoso cariño que Dios ha mandado a ser destinado, lo más para mí. Precioso regalo, precioso regalo, el cielo ha llegado y que me ha encantado de dicha Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you all.
Great job.
Thank, thank you all.
A lot of yelling. Thank you, everyone. This is Mariachi Los Gueros. This is, this is just one of the songs that we've actually been working on for region. So hopefully these kids are going to be ready and be able to be in a region mariachi pretty soon. There's like more seventh graders than there are eighth graders, so they've, they've really come a long way, really a long way. Special thanks to Mr. Salinas also, because he's the one that works with them primarily.
Okay, and our last takeaway, actually will require UOL's participation, so if you could stand up.
More members, so we have enough.
More members, stand up. This is a takeaway, so you'll This is a takeaway, so you'll be able to put it in your office.
That was awesome.
We're waiting on our tribal.
Yeah, they're coming in.
Warriors.
And while they're coming in, that brings back memories. It's not about me, but I started the first high school mariachi in 1980 in the valley, in West Laco. Now it's grown up into this. And it's amazing to see these kids keeping that tradition. And there's money in it, once you start.
So, so the takeaway, the takeaway, one of the things that we talked about during enrichment, we had a presentation. Each of the principals was challenged to break a board. And the message was, stop bullying. So each of you today, you'll get a board. And we're challenging you to break the board. Don't worry. I was worried when I was up on stage and what am I going to do? And he decides to pull out a thicker board for me. So don't worry, I got the small ones for you. And you will do the same thing here in just a few minutes.
We're trying to organize this real quick. No, they need room.
Come around.
Come around.
Come around, okay. And while they're doing that, while they're getting organized, or they're picking the person you're with, members here and school board members. I'm glad that Ms. Adias invited me to come to this presentation. I do teach the anti-bullying program at TM Intermediate. This is my 10th year. Got started about 10 years ago. And pretty much the goal, the goal for that is to avoid, what's the goal? What was the goal? To avoid what? To avoid and prevent physical confrontations by using your words, to de-escalate a situation and not escalate it, and building that confidence up. That's the whole purpose of the class. And of course, we talk about fiscal bullying, verbal bullying, social bullying, and cyber bullying. It's crazy that it starts so early now, okay? So the purpose of this here is just to, board members, you're, you'll break it. You better. I had a principal in the valley. I, I go all around and do presentations. And I was on Ms. Adias.
You'll break it.
One, one principal came up and it was like, her face is, okay. So the goal is, you know what? We don't always agree as a board, as teachers, or whatever, but we got to come together to do what's best for the kids. Right now, we want to make sure that bullying has to stop. It makes me sad when I go to schools and ask kids, who I should be bullied, made fun of, embarrassed, and I'll ask one or two kids and they raise their hand. And I, and this just happened, well, during intercession, I went to some different schools. And the answer was, I've gotten used to it. No, you don't get used to getting bullied. It needs to stop. So that's the message right there. So, okay, board members.
Don't pick on me first.
No, 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 no. No, I'm talking to everybody, okay?
There's one from Miss Accord. Do you have one extra?
You're going to strike with this part, with the heel.
There we go, right there.
Palm, here, palm.
Right in the middle.
Yes, right here.
Right in the middle.
And spread out a little bit. Look at the message. Hold it up, lock it out. Holders, remember we talked about that? Hold it a little bit harder. Right there. But the problem is that, no, all the nerves are connected. When I hit that, my back's going to hurt. Okay, okay. We have talked about this. We were going to try to have them break it with their nose. We're not going to try that today, they're not in advance, okay? So, we're going to do it at the same time. Holders, hold that board out.
We have one more.
Okay, first of all, I want everybody in here to repeat after me. Stop bullying. Say it.
Stop bullying.
Say it again.
Stop bullying.
Needs to stop. Needs to stop. Lock it out, baby, you know that. Lock it out.
Hey, here we go.
Get ready.
He'll signal you.
Get ready.
Ready?
Okay. If you're right-handed, left foot in front. And I'm going to count, count of three. We're going to go one, two, and we break on three. And if you don't break it, it's going to be embarrassing. You can do this. Here we go.
Do it.
Ready? Everybody ready? Holders ready? That's the main thing, holders are ready.
Right in the middle, right in the middle.
What's the message again?
Stop bullying.
One, two, break. Boy, took it two times. It's okay. Nobody saw it. Keep it, put it somewhere. That's the message. This is from your kids here at TM. Great job. Thank you all so much. I want to thank them again for the invite.
Thank you. Thank you, I'm in the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out. We appreciate it. Especially our kiddos and all the teachers.
I hope that you liked that. My name's Angela Sico. I'm the tribal leaders advisor at the middle school. And those are my kids. We have 36 kids who go on Friday, well, on Wednesday mornings, they come in to learn a socio-emotional lesson for the kids. And then they go to the sixth graders on Friday morning during advisory, the personal part, and they teach them that lesson. And so we've been working on trying to build social skills. A lot of kids don't have them and try and help them out. So we appreciate you all playing along there. We're going to be talking to you about the libraries now. The librarians are here and we wanted to give you a state of the libraries in the district and kind of let you know where we are with some of those things. There's not enough time for us to show you all of the things that we do. So it's kind of a highlight reel. We're going to try and go as fast as we can because I know y'all have a long life. So our primary objectives in the library is really to promote reading, to promote search and research skills because that's a huge thing. A lot of people will type in an entire question on Google or whatever. You don't have to do that. Betting informational accuracy, if anything, from the past couple of election cycles have taught us and the COVID-19 outbreak and everything, that there's a lot of people who have trouble figuring out what's real and what's not in social media and the news. And so teaching kids about informational accuracy is really, really crucial. It's one of those things that we've always thought was as important as librarians, but now I feel like that's really one of my biggest things to really work with. And cyber safety, because our kids are really at risk. You know, all the things that are out there on the internet. We have a lot of shared resources between us and the libraries. One of them is our websites. We have Final Site, the new website this year, the new website program. And so we all retooled our websites to try and make them more friendly for the parents and the kids to be able to use and to give them some resources to help them at home with their children. We have Follow Destiny, which is what keeps up with all of our books in the system, as well as all of our computer and technology stuff for the kids. We have Sora and Overdrive, which are eBooks, something that we really didn't have before. We've had a lot of open source eBooks, but now because of the COVID outbreak and going to online school there for a while, we, there was no way to get books in the hands of kids. And so the district stepped up and helped us with that, which we really appreciate. And we have TextQuest, which are our databases that are, the state-supported databases. It's kind of like a leveling, a playing field. If you think back to the old-fashioned reference library from when we were kids, it's a reference library that's the same for all the schools. So that's what those are. And really, we have one goal, and that's to cultivate creativity, collaboration, critical thinking, and community. So over the next couple of slides here, we're going to show you just some highlights of those things in our district, all across the district at our four campuses. When you see red slides, those are high school. Green is middle school. Blue is intermediate and purple is, is primary. So one of the things that, that I do at the high school is for grad night, I spend the whole night at the high school with the kids. And I create an escape room for them. If you've ever done one, they are loads of fun. And the kids have a blast. They come in in teams of anywhere from two to eight and try to escape the room and solve all the puzzles. It's so much fun. And then these are kids who are using our resources. We, we have a project and materials area where we provide markers and crayons and construction paper and all the stuff that some of the kids don't have at home. And so they can come up and get that at school and, and work on their projects in the library. I have something similar. It's called a workshop. It's a makerspace and I have all these different tubs of different craft materials, different little circuits and pieces from old computers that have gone to the graveyard, cords, plastic, you know, all sorts of stuff like that. And kids will come in and they'll make gifts for their mom for their birthday or they'll make a project for class, you know, like, who knows? It's just a place for them to be creative, something that's important to me. We also have Warrior Studios. It's a beginner-level digital media project area. It's really a closet. It's a little triangular-shaped closet. And I got a green screen and a selfie green light and a little place for their phone. And they'll make commercials for speech class or they'll make a digital media project for class. And, you know, it's middle school grade. But it's just getting them to start thinking about storyboarding and, and all of the things that it takes to make a media.
We also have stations in the intermediate library. We have building materials. We have art station. I have an art station that changes every two weeks. They have a new project there. And a lot of that is based on actual art, not really crafts, because we don't have art at our school. This is a digital project that we did through the libraries where the students go in and they created a digital slide. And so they're practicing their digital skills, but they're using their creativity too.
As far as creativity with the little ones, I did a book tasting with a creative lesson. I had them get to know all the two-by-two books at one time and they did kind of like a round robin and got to get to know all the books so that the next time they came in, they got to, they, they got to taste of each of the books and they got to know them and wanted to know, they got to see which books they wanted to check out the next time. And we, we actually celebrated International Dot Day in each child. We read the book all together and I think we even put it in the announcements and we celebrated all week. And the kids got to decorate their own coffee filter and we put them up at the school for about probably half a month, so.
So for collaboration, we try to get the kids to work together and to work with teachers, and then we work with teachers. This is a project that's ongoing right now. I was really jealous about the, the grant that Felicia got for her to remake her library. And so I put the kids to work. And I talked to Mahogany Garza, our engineering teacher, and her interior design kids are redesigning the library, the interior of the library to fit what they think their needs are. So I can't wait to see it. They're, they're in the process of building their models right now. So it's, it's going to be really cool. And then I also do speed dating with books. I've done it with freshmen this year. And they come in and they get to read for five minutes. They, they sit down at a table, there's books there. They choose one, they read for five minutes. They can take that book with them if they want or they can give it up and pick another one. And we do three or four rounds of that during the class. And that helps them to see the different books that are in the library, the different genres. And, and sometimes it clues them in, oh, well, maybe I do like to read. I just haven't read what I like to read before. Because my kids don't say they don't like to read. And then we also have a program with the Delmar Library for the dual-credit classes. I just went to a video conference with the Delmar librarians showing me what, what the dual-credit kids have so that when they come in, I can help them with the Delmar materials.
So. I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? This is, it's real interesting, but I had a question like, how do you pick the groups? Are y'all scheduled in like the last group that just talked? Do you have this built into the master schedule? Or how do, do they go on their own, like their lunch hour?
For, for me, they come in on their own. The kids come in on their own. The teachers can schedule time, but it's not a, it's not a regularly scheduled time. So the teachers would book with me or the kids can come in before school, after school, or during lunch. And at middle school, we're on a rotation. Every language arts class comes once every two weeks.
All those kids from middle school?
Well, there are.
So this particular slide, we're talking about the way we use the space. So when the classes come, it's very difficult to give up what they consider an instructional day to come and just check out books, right? So the kids will come and they'll check out books. We'll do things with books or the teachers will use the space that they have, which is really great because, you know, with COVID and trying to keep the kids safe, it's very difficult to do group projects, group work, things like that, right? So you have all this space where you can spread people out and they can move around. So we had teachers that did gallery walks. We had teachers that did escape rooms with iPads. We had teachers that did speed dating. We've done lunch and learn where the kids would come in and eat lunch. There for a while with COVID, we couldn't keep everybody in the cafeteria because it was just too crowded. So I use the library as a space for overflow and we would, we had probably 60 to 80 kids that were eating lunch in there every day, but they were able to spread out and still be around each other, but not so close. And, and we just really have used that space a lot. The picture there with the bookshelves is a picture of a class that did book spine poetry. So they wrote poems using the titles of books. So they went around, they had a theme in mind and they went around and find different things that would go together. And then all those stacks of books, it's hard to tell from here, but that's the poems that they wrote. So we're trying to be creative with the space. Also, I've been collaborating with ACC. We go as a library team, we go to the library conference every year, except for during COVID. We had to do that digitally, like on Zoom. But we get all these different, they're called ARCs. It's advanced reader copy books. And so I've been donating those and sharing those with the ACC kids so that they have a library because they don't have one. And I thought it was really important for those kids to be able to read and see themselves in the books that are out there. So we've been able to do that. At one point in time, Ms. McLaren had a little Starbucks cafe, but the fire marshal didn't like the furniture and so she had to take it out. But they still have those books and the kids are still reading.
For collaboration for intermediate school, we've written grants with teachers and across campuses. Felicia and I wrote one right before COVID. Adam Rubin came and he actually won the Texas Blue Vonnit Award like the next month after he came. That was just fantastic. I've got a book vending machine that we wrote a grant for. It still hasn't come from last year, but I think it's because of COVID also, because of materials.
It's on a slow.
It's on its way. It's been on its way. But it, when it comes, it comes. And just to answer your question about how it works, Mr. Simoniego, at, at my school, we have a schedule where the kids come in every two weeks with their teacher for a lesson, an explicit lesson from me, 30-minute lesson. But it's also open all the time for checkout for anybody that wants to come in. And the stations are always open for anybody that wants to come in. Their teacher has to send them, but other than that. So it's a structured and unstructured at the same time. And I collaborate, the, the lessons are a collaboration between me and the teachers, what they're teaching at the time. The beginning, it's library lessons. And then after that, I just kind of go with what, what the teachers are teaching and try to do a digital, you know, some kind of project where I integrate the digital, Google. I integrate the digital Google and things like that.
So as you mentioned, we did, the kids really enjoyed Adam Rubin. He visited our library, the kids, that's all they want to read now, especially since they went on to the intermediate. So that was a big thing at our school, and we're still trying to collaborate between us, so that saves us money. So collaboration is a big deal with Olivia and I. And then collaboration within the school, we started something a couple of years, I think it was 2018, we had Storybook Fest, Forest, I'm sorry. And each grade level picked a storybook or character and decorated the Christmas trees during December. And so the kids would see, the kids would decorate an ornament that went along with the Christmas trees, their certain character, and they would just boo and awe every time they would go to lunch or to PE here. So they had a good time doing that. We plan on doing that again this December, but we're going to do Christmas around the world.
And as far as critical thinking, the state resources are very, very important, especially at my campus. Well, not that they're not important at the rest of them, but, because I certainly don't mean that. But they're important because it gives the kids a place to go for verifiable, grade level, dependable news, or information, sources of information that they can count on, sources of information that aren't going to disappear or change. And so we use the state resources a great deal. It's a place where the kids can go and get newspaper articles, they can go and get encyclopedia information, they can get information on countries. The state resources are very, very important to my kids. And then we also have a game and puzzle area. And I feel like this is a lot to do with critical thinking, because I don't know how to play chess. But these, I've got kids that come in, like, in five minutes during passing period, and they'll make a couple of moves. I'm in awe, they're amazing. And they're coming in, and they're playing a game that somebody else started. So it just, they amaze me. And then the Christmas tree, the reason that's in this puzzles and games slide, is because last year, we did this Christmas tree, we had the soccer team, I think, no volleyball team, came in and built this tree for us. We had no idea how many books were in this tree, because there were books all in the inside too. And so we opened it up and said, kids, teachers, come on in, guess how many books are in the tree? And some of the kids got really close, even though they couldn't see the books inside, because they were using estimating skills.
So with the middle school, I don't have a whole lot of pictures of the kids doing this, but they do use them. I have two boys that went all the way through TM and love this school. I've been here 28 years. And so every holiday, all they wanted was Legos, always. And so I have tons of Legos, and what am I going to do with them, right? So I bought them to school, and I put them in little buckets, and so I have enough for a class of 26 kids to come in and work in partners. They can use them to make simple machines for science, they can use them for creativity things, they could make a scene from a story, you know, whatever. And then I have a bunch of STEM kits, so I have Ozobots, which are these little, it's like a coding thing. There's a game called Block Cells, where you can make games with your phone. It's like a video game building thing. I have 3D doodle pens, which is like a precursor to a 3D printer, because if I had a 3D printer, then I'll be making unicorns and footballs and whatever, who knows what they would make. Anyway, so I have a lot of things like that for the kids to get, like, pre-engineering skills. Also Rubik's cubes. This is weird, I bought a bunch of them, I collected them for a while. And I have a big basket of them, and the kids like to come and challenge each other on them. I have several that are the same. So they'll, like, race each other to see who can fix it first, right? And they love doing it, they really do. This little guy wants to come every single day, and if there was one that was broken, and it had fallen on the ground or something into a bunch of pieces, I sent it home with him over intercession, and he came back and he had put it back together. Like, it's really good puzzle-type skills that the kids are not necessarily always getting with classwork, right? So it's just something different.
I have an estimation jar in my library. Every two weeks, I change the candy in it. So as you can imagine, it is pretty darn popular. And I put clues on the top, and they have to use the clues to estimate. So it's not just like, if you don't give them some kind of guideline, they'll put a million, or, you know, 50, or, you know, they just don't think at all. I make them think a little bit, and that, and then I put the winner on the morning announcements, and they just love that. Sometimes there's more than one. And then I also use our digital resources all the time. In fact, our lesson this week and last week is a Veterans Day research activity using those digital resources. And it's just, it's a simple, interactive way for them to start thinking. I'm not going to go to Google and Google something that might not be accurate information. I'm going to use these encyclopedias that our school district provides. And so it's just practice for that.
So inside our library, I applied for grants through the credit union, and we put up a Lego wall and some magnetic boards, and the kids really love it. They just, that's the first thing they're drawn to. It's like our makerspace, so they like to play with that. And I also get buckets of, that's the station. So I also get buckets of Legos, and they play with that as well. And that's just one of the things they go to, that's one of their well-known places. And I also have B-bots, which are coding too as well. And I got that, I purchased those with TMEF funds, so that's one of the things that I, we try to do. We learn about these things when we go, when we're fortunate enough to go to the conferences. So those are, these are things that we bring back. One of the things, I have big puzzles for them when we do stations, and just magnetic things, they love to play with those things. So it's just, you know, a fun time in the library.
So as far as community, I try to do a lot of displays in the high school library, and this is going to be my display for Fiesta in April and May, because we've got so many amazing Hispanic authors. And so I'm trying to pull different cultures and different, and give our kids exposure to these, because a lot of times, they don't have exposure to cultures from outside just what's in our area. And so I do that through displays. The display down below is, we read diverse lit. And so it's books that have characters that look like the kids who are reading them. And that's really important, because our kids have a place in the broader world, and some of them don't know that. And, you know, they read about a character who's, you know, doing amazing things and looks like them, and has a family like them, and, you know, has a cultural identity like them. And so, you know, that's something that we try to showcase in our libraries, because it's, you know, we all want to be, we all want to see people like us. And so that's something I try to do at the high school. And then we also collaborate outside the schools. Team of Fest by Debate has been supported by the Education Foundation with grants. And we take our high school kids and the middle school kids over to the American Bank Center, and we bring in, this year we've got 20 authors who are coming in, published authors. And it's a small enough festival that the kids actually have time to talk to the authors. It's not just a, oh, here, sign my book, now get out of the way and let me sign the next one. In fact, a couple of years ago, I had a student, and one of the authors came, and they just, they just clicked. And they even, she's in college now, and she communicates with him, and he is a mentor for her. And so those kind of connections are made. And this is Alex Timbledore, and she was our author, our last author pre-COVID. And so I'm hoping to bring one of the other ones here. In fact, one of the authors who's coming is Manuel Ruiz, who is Mr. Ruiz's cousin. So, you know, we've got that collaboration, and it's loads of fun. Several of us from TM are on the planning team, and I lean on most of my friends to volunteer also.
She's not going to tell you, but she's the president of it for the Coastal Bend, which is a big deal.
The other thing that we do is, and I titled this Getting Through It Together. It's been a rough year. Our high school kids have lost parents, they've lost friends, they've lost two of our teachers. And so we brought the therapy dogs in, and this is actually my dog, you can't tell it because you can't see him, but this is he and one of the students who came to the library, and they just chilled together. And, you know, that's what these dogs do, is they come in and they just are a source of comfort. And then these are two of our, well, one of our former kids and one of our current kids, and they were doing yoga on the, in the atrium outside the library.
So, you know, the primary library is getting a very big remodel. It won a grant, which is amazing. And I had gone to the meeting for that and got super excited about it, and then they were like, yeah, it's just going to be for the little kids this time around, and I was like, hmm. And so I was like, you know what, I'm going to do something about it. And I went back and I rearranged my furniture. Y'all, the furniture had been there, the circulation desk had been there for 20-plus years, like, since they built the school. And I called the maintenance guys, I was like, hey, this is kind of weird, but can you take this apart and we're going to move it over here? And they were like, what? And, but I moved the circulation desk and broke it up some, and then I moved some tables that I had, and I made like a little café space, and it looks very different, and the kids love it. They love to come and sit at those café tables because it makes them feel adults. They have tall stools, kind of, and they'll pop their little laptop up there, and they'll work. I've got some murals planned. I don't know if you can really make out the murals, they're more like floral, but they're by a local artist named Sofia Rodriguez Oropresta, and she's from Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi. Her family's from Mexico City, and she's a wonderful artist. The electrical boxes that are downtown on the corners, she won the contest for that. So that's what those panels are, but she's going to come and make me some murals for the top of the library, like the panels. So I'm super excited about that. Also, book fairs, we all do book fairs. They're so rough. Anyway, y'all are like, quit having book fairs because we don't want to spend the money. And we're like, oh, it'd be nice if we didn't have them sometimes. But anyway, we love the book fairs, and, I'm just kidding. And it's like bringing a bookstore to the kids, because a lot of the kids out here, they don't go in town. They've never been to Barnes and Noble, they've never been to Half Price Books. So when we have a book fair, that's what we're doing. We're bringing a bookstore to the kids, and they just love it.
For us, at the beginning of the year, before the kids started, we set up a staff zen zone in the library. We set mood music and had treats and ice water, and I had drawings for Starbucks cards, and man, they just come like hornets to a nest over those Starbucks cards. I think they really liked it. Go ahead, Dick. And then we also, I add the two therapy dogs, and we've provided comfort this year. Well, not, we have provided comfort, we went to the high school when we lost the soccer coach. That little girl that's crying there, that was the day that it flooded in front of our school, y'all remember, a few weeks ago? And we stayed, the kids were there until like 6 o'clock because they couldn't leave because it was flooded. And that little girl was crying so hard, and so I just said, just sit there. Walter just happened to be there that day, he was kind of scared too, actually, so they were kind of comforting each other. But we also do fun events, we do the pumpkin tree, and, you know, we like to be out in the community with the dogs, the kids, and the adults really like it.
Yeah, that center was what my dog looks like from the top.
Yeah, that's Robbie in the middle there. That's Debbie's dog.
So in the community, we had our first annual Great Pumpkin Contest, and we have a population of 920, about 920, at the primary, and we had over 230 pumpkins turned in. So the judges had a hard time picking, but they, the kids and the parents did a really good job, and they were so excited. We have Accelerator Readers' Celebrations. The one on the very bottom is, we had a campout with the kids, we had smores, they got backpacks full of books and posters, and they got to pick out their own books, and they just had a good old time celebrating their reading.
So a lot of people think that librarians check books in and out all day. I hope that you guys got a little taste of that. It's not what we do all day, we do a lot more. In fact, we got rid of so many slides off of that thing, I can't even tell you. We could have gone until 2:00 in the morning, but we knew that you wouldn't care for that. But we want to thank you so much for your support. You support libraries by hiring certified librarians. We all have master's degrees in library science, and that is not true of every librarian in this, in this district it is, but not in, even our surrounding districts don't provide that. And when you do that, you're providing excellence for your schools, your teachers, and your students. So we really appreciate it. Felicia said something about sending us to our conferences, we really appreciate that too. That helps us develop professionally, and we bring that excellence back with us every year. We really appreciate everything you do for our libraries, and we'd love for you to come and visit anytime the doors are open, we'd love to have you. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you for taking care of all of our kiddos.
Well, we like what we do, we really like it.
We can tell.
And now we have to apologize to Holly, because I think we went a little over our 10 minutes.
Pretty sure. I think she wants you to fill out that reading inventory and give it to Ms. Sephora.
Yeah, we would like to know what you like to read.
There's some other little flyers on there that we give out to the kids.
She told me to write mine. How long have you been with us? You don't want to know. What does that mean?
You know, you know we're with Bobby right now.
Yes.
So we apologize for taking up more than 10 minutes of your time, but we thank you.
Thank you, thank you, very, very much.
Are you sure I get this from each of you? Because there's an assignment next time.
Oh, boy.
I know you're excited about that.
Will you throw it? Tomorrow?
Okay, we'll go to the public notice, the grant application, and I think that that's Hollis?
Well, I think she's stepped off. The T-class grant, what we had to do tonight is to tell you that we're applying for it. The C in the T-class stands for COVID, and this is going to eventually be tutorials. We're looking at a special program, after-school tutorials, to help people learning, since so many students have been at home. So that's what that's all about. You did not vote on that tonight, we just had to notify you that we're applying for it.
Very good. Thank you. Next, the board, District of Innovation. Interesting reading there, the board book of innovation.
We have many good things going on in this district, and we continue to explore and update and improve. And Dr. White is going to present to you information about the District of Innovation.
Good evening, board members and members of the audience. I'm back here again for the second presentation to revisit the conversation we had prior about the District of Innovation, and just some of the things we've been up to since we last spoke last month. So where are we with this concept of District of Innovation for TN? So we started with the president. presentation to the principals and directors, gave them an overview and understanding of what DOI is, and we did the same thing for you all last month. Then, from the meeting that we had with you all, we, um, had our first District Planning Committee, um, led by Holly Alderson. And during that meeting, I was able to present the new and improved information that I have done in the two meetings prior, but added some more detail and some more specifics that I thought would help kind of orient and get us all on the same page with DOI. A part of that presentation, we did a survey, and I'll kind of go into those results later on in the presentation today. And then, um, as far as today's presentation, back here for just another informational round for you all, so that we all have a better understanding of exactly what DOI means. And then just highlighting that the next SBDM or the District Planning Committee meeting is December 3. So just to kind of give everybody a, a general idea of the timeline that we've been working with here. So, what have we learned so far? I would say that the first thing that we learned was that, again, back, looking back at the presentation, uh, last month, one of the big questions we had was, will the District of Innovation designation, will that impact our current standing as a year-round school system? Well, it definitely will not. And I'll, again, show you the reason why, which is because we are technically taking advantage of Section 25.084 as part of the TEC Texas Education Code, as far as how we are currently identified as a year-round district. If we were to do that through the DOI available exemption, we would look at a additional, uh, TEC code, 25.081. However, because we are already designated as a year-round school system, uh, we do not need to go ahead and do anything with that as far as the DOI is concerned. They are separate. Therefore, if we decide to move forward with the DOI planning process, we can continue to remain as a year-round school. We don't need to do anything or have anything messed with as far as the DOI available exemption is concerned. So that clears up that question. The other question that came up during the District Planning Committee was how, or what are some of the steps or processes involved with the DOI that will allow for an amendment or change or an update to the plan? So I just wanted to make everybody aware that the DOI process does allow for amendments, renewals, and, um, changes. Specifically, with respect to amendments, um, there's some language that kind of outlines how amendments would be, uh, done, and this slide just kind of speaks that a little bit. I know we're not quite there yet with the DOI process, but again, these were some of the conversations that we had as a District Planning Committee, so I wanted you all to be aware of some of the things that we discussed.
Dr. White, who's on this committee right now?
Uh, it comprises, uh, teachers from every campus, um, and then, uh, central office administrators.
And community.
And community members and parents.
It's our district site-based committee.
So with amendments comes a renewal. Um, if we were to become a District of Innovation, the plan that we would adopt would last for five years. And within those five years, again, we have the opportunity to make changes, to make updates, as long as we follow two specific protocols. Any changes or updates, amendments would have to be approved by the District Planning Committee, and then those, uh, recommendations for amendments or, uh, changes would have to be voted on by the school board with a two-thirds of approval. So there's a two-step process for making any sort of changes to this DOI. And again, no TEA approval is required. Only our communication and our updates would have to be sent to them so that they have that for their records. So what were some of the other things that we learned? Well, as we were talking about our unique standing as a year-round school district and trying to understand how the District of Innovation process would benefit TM, some of the things that we learned was that the majority of the school districts in Texas not only qualified for the same DOI designation, but they've already taken advantage of it. So of the 1,029 independent school districts in Texas, again, this is just, uh, not including charters in some of those other optional districts, 914 are already designated DOI. And the majority of those designations came in 2017, which means that the majority of the school districts right now are going through their renewal process because it's been their fifth year. So what takeaway message this is for us is that there are several exemplar plans available that we are looking at and can currently use to help guide us through our process if the board decides is that this is what we would like to do for the district. Some of the other things that we learned as we were looking more specifically at the data in Region 2 Independent School Districts, we discovered that Driscoll, Mathis, and Santa Gertrudas are the three Region 2 school districts that are both year-round and DOI, meaning they took advantage of their DOI available exemption to make themselves a year-round school system. And what's interesting about us and also London, we're the only two year-round school districts, meaning we took advantage of the other available Texas Education Code to just make ourselves a year-round school system. So, we talked about some questions. We learned some really interesting facts, but it took us back to this question. Why is DOI needed? And some of the things that we talked about, but more importantly, the big takeaway was that we all felt that if we were to move through, move forward and with that process, it would lead to improved student outcomes. And by that, I mean, becoming a District of Innovation is really about empowering parents, teachers, and staff on our planning committee to have more local control over how to best meet the needs of our students. In essence, that is exactly what the District of Innovation Plan is about, and why it's in place, and why 89% of the school districts in Texas have taken advantage of it, because it gives the committee members, that committee, the local control over, uh, an array of exemptions, not saying that we have to choose all of them, even if we just choose one, that gives that committee through the board approval process the control of how that needs to look in order to best match and fit those needs of our students. And because over the last couple of years, as we know with COVID and just some changes overall, and just how fast technology is kind of forcing the change and bringing about change, we felt that it's our responsibility to really look at this process to determine if and how it could benefit us, our students, our community. So, but that still kind of brought us back to some common concerns, all right? So not ignoring all the positives, but also needing to understand, what are some of those lingering things that we need to make sure that we understand and know about so that if we do move forward with the DOI process, that doesn't become an issue for us? And so there were three specific things that we kind of talked about in the committee meeting. We talked about, um, discussion behind, well, increased flexibility, more local control might lead to a decreased accountability. We also talked about how parents, students, and staff members could lose rights and/or protections granted to them by law. We also discussed the product this process might only reflect the desires of a select few. However, because the committee is a diverse and inclusive makeup of our entire committee, like Ms. Cora said, it's got teachers, parents, community members, and administrators all across the district, um, we felt that through the collaborative process of the planning committee, we can do this the right way, meaning those three concerns that are on the slide right there, those won't be an issue for us because we already know about them, therefore we won't allow them to happen. And the way we will do that is to make sure that through collaboration, all ideas, all opinions are being represented so that at the end of the day, whatever exemptions or whatever plan we put together will truly be a representation of all the students' needs in the district, not just, not just some or just a select few. So, talking about the survey. So we issued a survey that asked two questions. The first question being, how does everybody feel about simply just moving forward through the District of Innovation planning process? Everybody who responded, they said, yes, we are all about moving forward through the process. So there was no discussion, so to speak, about whether or not we should do it. The conversations really are now just about how do we want that to look, what do we want to do, and how can we maximize the flexibility behind some of the exemptions so that, again, we are taking advantage of those, just like some of the surrounding districts that are near us are right now. And so the second question on the survey really spoke to some of the potential exemptions that are available. We didn't go into all of them because some of them just don't apply to us or, um, take away some of the focus that we currently have. Um, so what we did was, we just listed what we felt were the, um, most, um, relevant exemptions. And so you can see the results right here. Um, everybody who responded, over half of the responses were in favor of each of the exemptions, with the certification of educators, um, exemption being the most selected. Everybody on the committee selected that exemption. I know there were some concerns about that earlier, just about in terms of accountability and whether or not we were kind of lowering our standards, so to speak, with maybe possibly just, uh, putting out the option of hiring somebody who is not traditionally certified. However, through our conversations and clear, clearing up some of those misconceptions, we learned that, again, there's a right way to go about through that exemption. And so after the survey, we talked a little bit more about some popular exemptions. Again, District of Innovation has been around for a while, so there's a lot of data on what districts are doing and how their DOI plans have benefited their, their kids in their district. And so when, uh, the district of the state was polled, um, as far as popular exemptions are concerned, you can see here, of the 20, I've listed the top 10 so that you can see, because I know the picture's a little small. Again, the first day of instruction was the most popular. And again, we've already taken care of that through our year-round school system designation. And so number two, teacher certification. It's, uh, at this point, we tend to associate District of Innovation with teacher certification, uh, flexibility, and that's obviously noted here on the survey. Then you get into class size and some flexibility behind how we can, um, kind of maneuver around some of the mandates of TEA student-to-teacher ratios. And again, as you see about minimum minutes of instruction, minimum attendance rule, we'll talk a little bit more about that exemption later. You can kind of get a sense of what's most popular. Specifically to Region 2 and the school districts that are in our ESC, we have 47 total districts, of which, right now, currently 29 are DOI, four are charter. So they're technically under that DOI umbrella because that's where the, um, actual idea of becoming a District of Innovation came from. And there are nine districts that do not have a designation. We are one of them. So we tend to fall into that year-round only category. As I, um, explained earlier, uh, ourselves in London are taking advantage currently of that. And then, of course, Driscoll, Mathis, and Santa Gertrudas are taking advantage of both the year-round and DOI, um, designation. When we look a little bit closer about what's actually going on specifically with each district in Region 2 and their DOI plan, I've listed out their exemptions, um, just to kind of bring us to a focus. Uh, again, these exemptions on the slide are the exact exemptions that the teachers voted on or the District Planning Committee voted on. And, um, you can see here just in comparison to how we here at TM answered, and comparing that to Region 2 districts that you'll find in bold. And then I listed just some popular, uh, bigger districts that are near our area. You can kind of get a sense of how they have chosen and, uh, went about, um, going with their exemptions. Um, the district on this slide with the most chosen exemptions would be Cal Allen. They chose just about everything they could, and that's fine. Um, perhaps that works out best for them. But again, that's not necessarily required. Um, and again, you can kind of see the varying selections from each district, but the most consistent, um, exemption chosen obviously would be the educator certification. So, the next question that comes up when we talk specifically about teacher certification is, how is this already different than some of the options that are already available for us as a district? We already have the option of emergency permit, and we've talked a little bit about that as far as how we use that currently for CTE teachers. However, I wanted to kind of bring to y'all's attention, um, specific language that is being used in a DOI plan, uh, one that was just recently passed by Corpus Christi ISD. Um, their board had some of the same concerns as you all have had, just about in terms of expectations and standards and making sure that we're not moving forward with an exemption that potentially put us at a disadvantage in terms of hiring a, a traditionally certified teacher. And so, um, I'm not going to quite read this entire slide, but what I'll do is point out very specific pieces that we, as a District Planning Committee, will take back to make sure that when we talk about our exemptions and how we will plan for them, to make sure that we are incorporating those best practices so that our plans will look and read and feel just like this one does right here. And so one big thing you'll notice about what Corpus Christi did with their teacher certification exemption is they have very specific selection criteria, okay? They, they map it out very clearly and very, um, very nicely so that there's no question about why they would want to keep this as an, as an option for them. So one big thing that Corpus Christi realized was that under the emergency permit or interim certification, you only get one year, meaning that teacher who's brand new, who's never been in education before, has one year to get fully certified, in addition to teaching, in addition to lesson planning, in addition to all the things that are required of that first-year teacher. What this plan by Corpus Christi allows is that that person has now two years to become fully, uh, certified through the traditional process. And so just that one little, um, nuance, one year to two year, is a really big deal because it takes some of the pressure off that initial teacher to focus more on just being that teacher in the classroom, working their way through the protocols of that campus or that district so that they are getting up to speed, and they can work on their, at their own time, at their own pace through that certification, which is an extra step that they will have to do outside and on their own time. One of the other things that Corpus Christi's plan incorporated was a hiring committee that would be specific to any teacher that would be considered for hire that was not on the traditional certification pathway. And so you can see that there, they call it the DOI Certification Committee, comprising the campus principal, the HR director, and the content specialist coordinator, specific to whatever certification, um, area that they're looking at. Specifically, they have used their exemption for CTE. I know that is definitely one of the areas that we are talking about using it for as well. And so it's, uh, pertinent that we look at this to kind of see what they have done. And, um, what's interesting, again, is that they have really been specific about how they're going to go about leveraging this exemption so that, again, teachers that are currently already certified take precedent, but if after two weeks, they are not able to find anybody, then that will allow them to look beyond just the traditional certified teacher, but then to other areas, perhaps in industry or in university, to explore other options. And they have hiring criteria as well. So not only do they have a committee, but this committee is bound by specific criteria that they will look at to determine the most highly qualified candidate. And some of those criteria, you'll see down below. Um, any sort of valid or current certification, licensure or documented experience in the subject area, so that industry experience, or the work experience exceeding two years, a full-time employment in the industry, and an associate's degree or higher from a credit college or a university. And so when we look to kind of wrap it up with their exemption, again, they have some, um, I guess, hiring expectations for their non-certified, uh, teachers, and you can kind of read those there a little bit. Uh, one of the things I thought was really, really good that they did was they, um, plan on assigning a mentor teacher with a minimum of three years of teaching experience. a mentor teacher with a minimum of three years of teaching experience, will assist them with their instructional planning. So they've embedded criteria that moves beyond just qualification, but also speaks to support for that person. It's part of their requirement. And that is definitely one thing that we can look at too and include if we decide that that's the path we would like to go down. Specifically also to teacher exemption is the teacher assignment exemption, which means what the teacher is actually teaching. And they also leveraged this exemption specifically for CTE to allow a current core teacher the opportunity to teach one CTE class or section that is obviously outside their area of certification, but it's kind of on the flip side to say, they are currently looking at their current core certified teachers, see if there's any interest, or if they have a background or interest in teaching a career technology course. And I thought that was interesting, because Corpus Christi is one of the only districts with a DOI plan that spells out this teacher assignment exemption just like this. And again, very specific language, specific criteria that's required, meaning the standards are high and the accountability is built in so that there's no disconnect between any of that. Moving on to probationary contracts, which is another exemption. Again, we've talked a little bit about this already, but again, providing you all with this specific language, this time, this district is Mathis. This is directly from their DOI plan. And again, they spelled out, as far as the benefit of exemption for them, is that it allows this district, Mathis, to evaluate an experienced teacher, one that is coming with that five-of-eight rule that we have to kind of look at, because that's the current rule. That would allow us to be exempt from the five-of-eight, and that means that if we would like for that kind of experienced teacher, but new to the district, to be on a probationary contract beyond that one year, we can't. And one of the reasons why a lot of districts, and Mathis in particular, has done that is because it allows for a truer evaluative process for that educator. I think we can all agree that we, in one year, don't always capture everything that that teacher can bring. And so, this district, Mathis, says two years will allow for a better read and a better evaluative grade for that teacher. And so, just that one little exemption, the district retains the power to make that choice. Because not always you need to, but when you do, it's really nice to have it. Moving on to the 90% attendance rule exemption, and again, this exemption comes from Beville. One of the reasons why Beville went ahead with the 90% attendance rule exemption is because of their emphasis on their unique needs with their students. I think we can all kind of go in that same general direction. We can all sit up here, talk all day about the unique needs of our kids, but at the end of the day, specifically for Beville, and I would like to think the same for TM, is that, what are we really wanting our students to walk away from when it comes with attendance? Is it just to be there to be there, or to make sure that when they are in attendance, that we are focusing on mastery learning and the skills that they need to attain in order to graduate college and career-ready? Well, Beville claims that you don't always have to have 90% attendance or the traditional sense of what attendance means to us in order to make that determination if students are at that mastery learning level. Meaning, if a student is unable to come to school, or has some other things that might prevent them from being able to attend 90% of the time, that should not be a barrier for a teacher or teachers to make a determination on whether or not they are at a mastery learning level, or have the requisite skills required for graduation. And so, again, it just provides the ability to create flexible learning plans that are tailored and specific to the needs of that particular student, in order to not allow something like attendance to be the reason why we're using that, although that student might perhaps already be at a mastery learning level, but they now cannot graduate because of the attendance. And so, this exemption really focuses primarily on making sure that we are all geared and focused on mastery learning and the skills behind mastery learning. And so, that just goes into a little bit more detail about that. Speaking specifically to UIL and compulsory attendance laws, those are still in effect, but again, it allows that teacher to make that determination based on mastery learning and not so much on attendance. One of the other exemptions, class size. Again, one of the reasons why Santa Catrudas, or in Flower Bluff, allowed themselves to be exempt from this rule is because it helps them with the option of new students coming in during that first six weeks or just throughout the school year. And as we know, when we get a new student, they gotta be placed somewhere. If that student is placed into a room where that ratio is already 22 to 1, then that automatically triggers the process where now we have to go through a whole bunch of red tape with TEA, we have to submit waivers, we have to contact them. It's just another bureaucratic process that we have to follow. And when I contacted them and I asked them, how many times has a waiver been denied? They said, none. They will always accept a waiver as long as you apply for it the proper way. So to me, that just means that that is just kind of bureaucratic red tape, because they're not really looking to deny anybody, they just require you to follow that process. Through this exemption, we don't necessarily have to file a waiver, but again, best practice tells us that we definitely need to communicate and make sure our parents are aware, and that is definitely something we can do. But again, it's just one less paperwork step that we have to take through TEA with this exemption.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Is that procedure any place in our state, or TA, or whatever, operating procedures themselves? Where is it written?
The class size, the ratio?
That's it?
Yeah. It's part of the Texas Education Code.
They do have it.
Yes, sir. We have to follow it. But this exemption would allow us to create some flexibility behind how we follow it. Because we still have to follow it, but we can kind of tweak that rule a little bit to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where now we're being forced to have to hire a teacher, because as soon as it came in at the end of the six weeks, our ratio was high now, or it's above the threshold, meaning we have to either hire somebody, or we have to figure out an alternative master schedule plan to get back into the proper ratio. This would allow us either to be a little bit above the threshold, or to do some different things grouping-wise, to ensure that we're maximizing the benefits of what those potential groupings could look like, so that we're gearing our groupings towards the needs of our students, and not just trying to meet some on-paper ratio that may or may not benefit us.
I have a question.
Sure.
Being able to tweak it doesn't mean that we're going to come up to 24, 25 kids per class, since we're able to tweak it, correct?
We can tweak it, so like, right now, it's 22 to 1. If we wanted to say, okay, we're going to set our threshold to 24, we could do that. And then we would build selective criteria into that to make sure at each step, we do certain things.
But that's what I'm saying, we're not going to go to that point where we're going to overwhelm the teacher.
No, no.
With 23, 24, 25 kids in the classroom.
No.
And stress the other kids out already, too.
No. And that's the thing, a lot of districts have adopted this exemption for a variety of reasons. One in particular that stands out to me is Clint ISD. I've been in contact with their Assistant Superintendent, just to learn myself through a district very similar to ours, they're in West Texas, just about their process and how they went about getting their DOI plan approved. And I asked them specifically about their class size exemption, and what the Assistant Superintendent told me was that, because their district is so large, it spans over 100 miles, but it only has seven schools. And so, one of the elementary schools is literally on the east side, and the other elementary school is on the west side. And it would take about 50 minutes from one end to the other to make it to each campus. And so, when they have one student come in and they are above ratio at one campus, they would then have to either bus another student over to balance out the ratio, or they would have to hire a brand-new teacher. And so, they took advantage of that exemption so that, one, it doesn't put transportation in the bind, knowing that they're above a threshold, and, two, it doesn't force them to have to hire another teacher, just because they got one new transfer student into the district. And so, the majority of the districts that have this class size exemption have done something very similar, but that one stands out to me in particular, because I never thought about a district being 100 miles long with elementary campuses on opposite ends and the transportation kind of logistical nightmare that that would cause. And again, like you said, Mr. Benavides, I know for a fact that anybody on the committee would not want to create a ratio, or create a rule, so to speak, that would put them at a disadvantage. And so, that was class size. Typically, what you would see is that class size and teacher ratio exemption are kind of together, because they work together. And so, one of the ways that you would see this exemption look, as far as in a school or in a district, would be with flexible class sizes. And it just allows certain districts to create specific groupings of students based on those needs, or based on those skills of the students, and not some kind of what you may call an arbitrary ratio that is supposed to be good for everybody. Well, maybe it's not necessarily good for what's best for our kids. Maybe we want this specific group to have 25, because there are GT advanced kids, we want them all together, because we want them all learning a specific skill. It's not so much about ratio, it's really geared towards that specific skill, or that teacher trying to teach that specific skill. Just kind of like what Ms. Arias said earlier in her campus presentation, her advisory period's very, very focused on creating specific groups based on a specific skill with a teacher whose strengths align to that skill, whether it's because the skill's deficient and needs to be improved, or because that skill needs to be enriched, so that those kids can continue to grow and become even better with that skill. And so, one thing on this slide I'd like to point out is that, again, when you think about enrichment, you think you can maybe get away with some bigger ratios, because you're trying to do some different groupings. However, when we think on the opposite, with our struggling learners, they may require some smaller instructional ratios. And so, when you think specifically about creating smaller groups, those students that were at that 22 to 1 ratio have to go somewhere else, right? And so, once you start kind of throwing off that balance, then you start getting into the, you start kind of, I guess, violating the current TEC class size and teacher ratio law, only, but only because you're trying to do something that's best for your kids. And again, if we were to go with this exemption, that just becomes an option for us, where we can specifically create some smaller groupings if we really need to, because we have a teacher that has a skill set that would align itself to a smaller group, and we know that those smaller groups, those kids would benefit tremendously from a smaller taught class. Okay. And then again, this is just talking about the protocol that this district would follow if they were to go above their ratio. And so, the campus principal would notify the superintendent, the superintendent would notify the board. They have set a limit that their class size ratio will not go above 24. And then it says, in the event a K through fourth or classroom exceeds a 22 to 1 ratio, the campus will notify the parents of the students in the classroom and inform them of the situation. And so, by no means does this exemption just throw out all the good practices that we would be doing, it just fine-tunes it a little bit so that it matches what our protocols need to be. And so, after reviewing all those exemptions, bringing forth once more a timeline, and I've revised it a little bit, since we are doing this for a second round, and as far as pre-planning, and just providing the information behind what the DOI process looks like. In December, we could move forward with a board resolution, which would kick-start the actual DOI process. Then in January and February, we would get back with the District Planning Committee, we would be at work, figuring out which exemptions we would like to choose, and what we would like to do as far as outlining those exemptions. And then in March, we would bring it all back, to make sure that everybody's on the same page for you all's approval. And so, there's some other details that need to be done as well, but by and large, that is the gist of what the process is. It's pretty simple, it's pretty straightforward, it's just about making sure that through that collaborative process, we all remain on the same page, so that transparency and awareness to everybody in the community is done. And so, that concludes the presentation. Are there any questions still?
So, if we get this, if we can vote on it in March, so we could start the new year as a DOI?
As soon as we are, as soon as it's voted on, that's when the plan takes effect.
Oh, okay.
So, at that point, when it's finally brought to y'all's attention for approval, then yes, we would be at that point, yes, a DOI district. And that would kind of lead us into the next school year, during the hiring season, and we'd be able to take advantage of those exemptions, if that's the way we went.
It's very good that there are districts out there that are local in some form, way that you can get examples from, which is helpful.
Very helpful.
Because learning from scratch is kind of hard, it's a time for some people. But it's interesting, thank you very much, there's a lot of good information in there and everything. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace.
Well, would anybody object to a five-minute recess? Maybe we have a motion for a five-minute recess? Second, all those in favor? Five-minute recess, it is 8:51 PM. November 15, 2021, we're back from recess. It is 9:01 PM, November 15, 2021, we're back from recess. We're going to have the new grading guidelines for secondary campuses, that's high school and middle school. Mr. Moore?
All right. Dr. Wallace, continue talking to us about this.
It definitely won't be as long-winded as I was with the last presentation, however, with this presentation, I'm here to bring an update to you all, so that everyone's aware of what high school and middle school has been up to with respect to creating their secondary grading guidelines and academic procedures for the 22, 23 school year. And so, the kind of guiding principles, as far as the grading guidelines are concerned, we wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the beliefs behind why this document was created. And so, the reason why this document was created was because we believe that grades serve as a valuable instructional purpose, by helping students and parents identify the students' areas of strength and areas needing improvement, recognizing that each student is an individual with unique needs. And also, because students and parents have the right to receive course grades that represent an accurate evaluation of the teach. The rationale being, the secondary grading guidelines and academic procedures were developed to ensure that policies for TM ISD, the Texas Education Code, and the Texas Administrator Code are aligned to the best educational practices for evaluating student learning at the middle school and at the high school. And some of the goals of the grading guidelines, to create a clear, shared understanding of what grades mean and how they are earned, provide a common language, expectation, and practice for secondary teachers, and to establish processes and procedures to ensure equity of instruction for teachers and equity of learning for students. And some of the benefits being, consistency between teachers of the same course, department, and school, improvements in the efficiency of teacher planning and professional learning during PLC time, alignment of instructional standards for teaching and learning, and of course, the ultimate goal, increased focus on student learning and improving individual And so, as Mr. Alvarado and Ms. Arias were creating were creating their procedures, we followed this decision-making chart. And so, as the principals worked with our campuses, they relied on two main groups: their site-based decision-making committee as well as their department heads. And so, through that process, the principals created their guidelines, which I was fortunate enough to work with them on, making sure that what middle school was doing, what high school was doing, was in alignment, that we were all kind of full-focused on the same vision, the understanding of what that procedure needed to look like. And then, through the approval of Ms. Akora, we were able to kind of continue to move forward through that process until we were done creating that document. And so, to kind of give some insight into this document, the table of contents was broken out into two areas, one of which being the grading guidelines. And you can kind of see the topics that are included in this new procedures and guidelines. And then, the academic policies and procedures portion, a little bit more specific about just how we do business as far as awarding credit, how we go about class schedules, how students earn course credit, how students can earn credit by exam, things like that. We didn't necessarily, it's not to say that we didn't have these already in existence or part of our procedures, but maybe they weren't as defined or as updated or specific as they needed to be kind of given just how rapidly legislature and changes are coming forward year by year. And so, this document has allowed us to be fully updated, aligned through secondary schools, and of course, making sure that every single thing that we're doing leads to improved outcomes for students. And so, just another look at what the academic policies and procedures include. Lots and lots and lots of detail, much of which, this detail here, was not in existence before. That was kind of part of our unwritten rules, just how we did business. But now, we've been able to capture all of this on paper so that anybody who would like to know or might not be fully understanding that particular procedure can now pick up that document, turn to the page, and read word for word. That way, we can all have a shared understanding of exactly the way that needs to look. And so, this will be produced into two formats, one of which being the traditional manual format. And this is just a screenshot from the exact grading guidelines. You can kind of see how it's outlined in a nice narrative with key topics and of course, the procedures that follow, whether it's we're following board policy or we are outlining a specific campus procedure. It's very detailed. The other format we will provide this in is the policy format. And so, this will mirror the local and legal documents that are already in existence. This just becomes our campus procedures document. But it's important that you all see it in the same format so that you can kind of mirror it to what we have in local legal to see just exactly how we now, as a district, and our campuses match up. One of the formats will be for what we're calling secondary academics. The other one will be for secondary grading. But the grading and academic procedures, they will all be in one manual. This is just to break it out, show some of the differences between the two. And that is all I have. Are there any questions?
It's amazing. I'm sure the district took quite a bit of time to do.
How long did it take you to do? Six weeks.
Six weeks. And that's, it's something that needed to be done to clarify a lot of situations. Like you said, some of this has been just a practice. But now, it's there in black and white so people can read it and understand it. And that's the best thing, especially when it benefits every one of our kids, especially in secondary school and all the parents and everyone. They all can have a clear knowledge and understanding of it, which is essential for them and their education and the parents' understanding, the plotting that may need to take place as well. So, I appreciate all the time that everyone put into it because I know everyone that was involved did do an excellent job. I definitely appreciate it. When I was reading through this, I was going, wow, something that needed to be done, it got done. We appreciate it very much. Something that'll benefit our kids. That's amazing that everyone. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, discuss and consider the, well, listen, here you go. Okay. Discuss and consider the approval of School Health Advisory Council SHAC members.
The board must approve the SHAC members. And after our meeting last time, a board member, Ben Benavides, said that he would like to be a part of the School Health Advisory Council. So, I present his name to you tonight to add to the committee. It is administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the addition of Ben Benavides to the list of student health advisory council members.
Thank you, Ms. Akora. Do we have a motion of administrative recommendation?
Not so.
If you extend the motion, we have a second. John, second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? As opposed?
I abstain. My name is on the list, and I would be voting for myself.
Okay. Very good abstention. Let's go to, I think it was, number one, one abstention. Okay, thank you very much.
I abstain.
Abstentions.
Yes.
Okay, discuss and consider 2022, 2023. Wow, academic calendar. It's slipping up on us.
Do we have it on the slide? A week or so ago, when our site-based committee for the district met, we met all afternoon, and we had basically two things on the agenda. One was the District of Innovation, which we went over quite a few of the items that Dr. White had with a lot of discussion. And the second item was the calendar development. And so, we had quite a bit of discussion. The committee looked at Plan A and Plan B. And then, we asked them, you know, would you like to make up a calendar? And most of them said, no, we think we like one of these up a little bit better. And so, the top vote getter from our site-based committee is the one you have before you. And it's pretty much mirrors the one we have right now. Of course, we're steering year-round. The triangles represent teacher-staff development. And so, the teachers would come in on July 13th, 14th, and 15th, and then, that Monday, the 18th. And then, school starts on July 19th. And we go for six weeks. And then, we go to Labor Day, would be a holiday. And then, that whole week right after Labor Day is intercession. So, that makes a nice break for those who, those families that have Labor Day off. And then, when we come back, that Monday, the 12th, is a staff development day. So, our students are essentially getting two weekends. Then, we go for another six weeks until October 24th. And we have that entire week as intercession. And then, Monday, we come back. The triangle is staff development. Then, we go for three weeks, and the dots are Thanksgiving. So, the full week off at Thanksgiving. It would go into December, the pink colors are testing dates. And you would see that we release for the Christmas holidays on December 16th. And then, we're off for two weeks. We go to January. We're off on Monday, January the 2nd. Staff development on the 3rd. And then, our students are back with us on the 4th. So, we don't have that big break at Christmas time that you have right now. It just happens to be the way the school year, the holidays fail on the weekends. Okay, then, the dots for January 16th, 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th, that's the livestock show. And we discussed at length, is that necessary to be off or not? And so many said, well, yes, because so many people are showing animals or they have home ec. projects, and they really need to check the animals in early in the week. And they're here for judging. And so, they said, yes, we need to keep that. So, they're off that week in January. Then, we're back to school on January 23rd. And we go until the intercession, which is February the 20th. When we come back, we have the triangle, and that's your staff development on a Monday. Then, we're back at work for six weeks. The pink dates, April 4th, 5th, and 6th are testing dates. And then, April 7th is Good Friday. Then, Easter Sunday is the 9th. And then, they're off that entire week for intercession. So, you're not really having the March week off that many schools have. You're actually having a little more time off in April. The weather's usually better then, too. Then, in May, we start up, May 1st, enjoying school. And then, we go to the testing. Again, the pink is the state testing. May 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 16th, and 17th. And the G stands for graduation. One of the reasons we have graduation so early is that's when we get the American Bank Center. Okay, and so, then, we continue having school without our seniors. And the May 26th with a line through it is early release. That is the only early release on the calendar. Then, on Monday, May 29th, that's Memorial Day. And then, we have staff development. So, you will see, we are finishing school with our students before Memorial Day. And then, we go into June. Sometimes, there's summer school. And then, the pink square is again, testing. So, you can see quite a bit of our time is testing. So, this ends up being 178 student days, 187 staff days. We do have some extra minutes if we need to have early release, like we had to have this week for high school to go to volleyball. And I know we also had an early release this year because of football being in the Valley. And students had to get out of town on, we had to work with elementary dismissal and secondary dismissal and so on to get free of the buses so they could go out of town. So, this is our best effort at a calendar. And again, it does somewhat mirror what we've had in the past. And we're asking for your approval tonight. Questions?
So, the last day of schools, the last day of fall is May the 25th for everybody?
The last day?
Seniors?
No, it is 26.
26.
But they get out at noon. Don't they get out at noon?
So, what testing are you all having in June, right?
Makeup or star at EOC.
Okay.
Anybody who needs extra testing?
The state and the school all does that.
Was there any community members or parents involved with this?
Yes.
There was. How many?
There was about five.
Site-based.
There was about five or six.
Five or six parents?
Yeah, yes.
The site bases are the same people all the time?
Yes, it's the same ones that we worked with for the District of Innovation. We, it was the same meeting.
Site-based does the calendar every year.
Site-based is listed in your board policy. It has been one of those organizations that has been around probably for 20 years. It just so happens that this year, we have more new members than we have in the past because many of the people we had that had been on the committee before have either retired or left the district. And so, we were really working with people who were eager to serve and eager to help.
Did both the middle school and high school, right?
Yes.
My only question I had was Monday, the 2nd of January. I mean, I guess I'm just wondering, like, you have 10 work, 10 calendar days or weekdays in December, and then, you moved up and you gave in 11 days. Is that just the normal that we always give out, 11 days? Then, you turned around, you had a staff development. And we, so that means the kids don't come back to actually Wednesday, the 4th?
Yes.
So, they have a week and three days, and then, we go into the livestock.
Okay, go back to December.
Those in January, actually.
Yeah. But December, we're off a little earlier than most schools. We end up on December the 16th. And then, the dots, it's two whole weeks in December. And then, we come back in January. So, there, yes, there are 11 days.
Right, and it's this holiday, though. So, you're not, I mean, so we're acknowledging the first on the Mondays, would you say?
We're off on Monday, yes.
For the first, for January, the first being on Sunday?
Yes.
Is that the way it works?
Yes.
Okay. No, I was just kind of, I saw that 11 day, and I wonder why that's there unless it's for the New Year.
Well, a lot of schools do that. They take the two weeks off, and then, they don't come back on January the 2nd because people are worn out from the holidays or they've perhaps partied a little bit, and so.
The only time our kids should ever be stressed is August and March. Those are the only months that they don't do, that they don't have a day off. So, I mean, I would hope it wasn't because of party. But the one, the root concern that I had is the state assessments. Upon graduation, we graduated on a Thursday. This would be the first time in a long time, wouldn't it be? We've been graduating on Friday.
It's usually graduating Thursday, too.
Did they graduate on Thursday last year?
Saturday last year just because of the schedule.
Yeah.
Just the way it works. That was an unusual day having a Saturday last year. Before, I think it was always on a Friday.
And you did it once before in the stadium, didn't you?
Well, yeah, but, no, I'm just saying because this time it looks like graduation is on a Thursday.
Yes.
But you have testing going on. So, those graduates with other, you know, with younger siblings, you know, like in high school or in middle school, they could be affected by that test period, wouldn't they? Or, well, high school only, I mean.
Well, the seniors would have already passed their tests.
No, no, I'm talking about students. I'm talking about if they have siblings.
They have siblings that are in earlier grades or in high school or in the middle school or something like that.
I guess what I'm really trying to find out is, does the American Bank give us the day that we can use? Or is it something that we?
A long, a few years ago.
You have to book it in advance.
You have to book it in advance if you want a certain hour, John. And a few years ago, we've always gone first, like, because you don't have to fight the crowd. And a few years ago, somebody took our spot. I think it was JP. And we graduated second. So, it was very difficult. So, the superintendent, I don't know where it was at that time, gave, asked the high school principal, book it three or four years ahead of time so you can get the spot and the time you want. That's what it came about.
Yeah, I remember that.
Remember?
Yeah, I remember it.
Excuse me for example, nothing. No, that's okay, you have the history. For that reason.
It would have just been nice to have that in November twenty-eighth, that Monday, the week of Thanksgiving. Because people, I mean, Thanksgiving is that thirsty, people leave town and stuff. And it's just always nice when you get that Monday, like from intercession, you get that Monday and just see.
The administration recommends for the Board of Trustees to approve as developed and presented by the District Planning and Decision Making Committee, the twenty-two, twenty-three academic school calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Cord, we have a motion, Jan makes seconds, John. Motion by Jan, second by John. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion case six zero. Thank you very much. I'm going to move on to the next item, discuss and consider the approval of T-Test Appraisers.
The T-Test is our teacher evaluation system. And Anna's going to tell us about that.
In board policy, everybody has, who is an appraiser for the teachers must go through an evaluation, through a certification process. And it's a five-day certification process. And then we have to go and we have to recertify periodically. By board policy, a supervisor in the class, in the school can evaluate any teacher that they want to without board approval. Then if they were, Janet and I talked about, said, you know, we, if someone else other than the teacher supervisor who works in the school can evaluate those teacher if the list is approved by the board. For example, we were just running into a situation. Okay, for example, last year, when I stepped in the high school, I could not have evaluated any teachers because my name had not been approved by the board. So just in case we need that or we have a situation with COVID, we thought they would bring, we would bring all of the list of all of the appraisers in the school district to be able to appraise any teacher that we have or if we have to step in for a second appraiser. So we were going to bring this list in November, but we were waiting for Damon St. John to get here. We hired him in September, but he just got here in November. So now that we are complete, we thought we would bring that list forward for your approval. So everybody can step in and help with the evaluation process. And if need be, Dr. White and I are also certified to do teacher appraisers. With your approval, then we can step in if we're needed. And this is the list that we have for this year.
Any questions?
So Dr. White and yourself are only as, as need, if needed?
If needed, yes, with your approval. Because we're not the supervisors for a teacher, we're district-wide. Now, Janice is also certified, but she says, oh, we didn't want her to go evaluate a teacher, appraise a teacher. But she is certified. And then John is certified to appraise the principals.
And I am also.
And so is Janice.
So, and the rest of these people, are they all principals?
Yes, and assistant principals.
And assistant principals. So there's seventeen in total?
I didn't count them.
That's a good idea, that we do this. Special.
In case we have COVID.
It's got to be done.
Just to be there, not that we're going to need it, but just to be ready.
Yeah.
We do this every year for the, remember, we do this for the appraisers. We do this, and it's just good that y'all include yourselves in there, just step in, fill in for them.
Normally, do the administrators evaluate their own teachers?
Yes.
Okay, it's the administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the T-Test Appraisers for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I make the most administration recommend, the Board of Trustees approve the T-Test Appraisers for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Do you have a second, say, any comments, questions? Thank you very much, it's very thoughtful and everything, I appreciate that very much. You have the comments, questions? All those in favor? Those opposed, motion case six zero, thank you very much. I'm going to move on to the next item, discuss and consider board go early education, college career, military readiness, it says CCMR.
And that is me, so, good evening. I'm going to come to you with our House Bill Three goals update. So what we're going to do is, I, the last time I presented these goals was in January. So we haven't even gone a full year, so the data that I'm going to show you reflects that. Now, we didn't know that at this time this year, we would still be in the middle of a pandemic and actually still going through that. So we have a lot of, it's part of the board. It was on the.
It's in the book, it's in the regular.
Yeah, it's on the PDA. Yeah, it's on the PDA. So that's going to go, we're going to go through the goals. Just a reminder, this is something that came out since the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year through the legislature. And it's just something that we're having to do. We didn't come to the board until twenty-twenty-one. So as I go through it, I want y'all to be aware of that, that we're just starting this process, even though it should have started a while back only because of COVID, we had a later start. Of course, House Bill Three requires for the school boards to adopt detailed plans in early childhood, college and career readiness. The plans must have district level oversight. That means that district level is making sure that we're in compliance with what needs to go on. They need to contain specific quantifiable annual goals for five years, reviewed annually by the Board of Trustees, and that's the one I'm doing tonight, the presentation I'm doing tonight, and include an annual online website reporting. So after I report this to you, it has to go on our website as one of the required parts of House Bill Three. Now, House Bill Three wants for us to think about students who are at the meets and masters level on STAR test. And of course, you know, the primary campus does not have STAR, but our STAR, our scores reflect what third grade has done. So I am going to report to you the scores that our third graders did this past spring and we're going to talk about the numbers. Now, if you see, it goes all the way back to twenty-eighteen when this started. But I didn't come to you until twenty-twenty-one because of the pandemic. So the scores are going to be, they're going to look a little alarming, but also we had a late start when we had come to you early on the year. So, and I'm just going to back up just a little bit more. This, the committee who came up with these goals was comprised of teachers from the primary campus, because the House Bill Three is for K through three teachers, kinder through third grade teachers. So in my previous position as Dean of Elementary Instruction, I did work with teachers from, two teachers from kinder, two teachers from first, two teachers from second, and two teachers from third, who came up with these percentages that I'm going to talk about. So it wasn't, you know, an admin level, it was the teachers who came up with these percentages of students. So they're saying that this year, twenty-twenty-one, which is highlighted right there, they originally have put us at being at fifty-two percent of students being at meets and masters. The yellow one tells us where we're actually at, which is forty percent. Now, that's not passing, okay, because the state means passing is that approaches. So approaches, we're at seventy-five percent. So don't get alarmed, that forty percent doesn't mean only forty percent pass. That means that only forty percent were at meets and masters. Remember, TEA has, did not meet standard, and then they go to approaches, which is passing, meets, grade level, and then a master's grade level. So they want us just to keep an eye on those kids that are meets and masters because they say those students are at grade level. But seventy-five percent did pass. Now, this also tells us in twenty-twenty-two that we're supposed to be at fifty-four percent. From forty to fifty-four, we have a lot of work to do, okay? So that's where we're at right now. On the bottom, we do have closing the gaps and those are student yearly targets. Again, this comes from just our data, our taper report and where we're at. And you can see there, I put the twenty-twenty-one, I put the meets and above, which is what we're supposed to be reporting in yellow. And of course, the approaches is what's on the bottom. Just so you know, it's not just that we're not passing, it's just that that meets and masters is what the state wants us to be right now focusing our attention on. So it breaks it up into the different subgroups, Hispanic, white, special education, economically disadvantaged, and English learner. Now, there are three areas, we didn't have the data on only because the taper report hasn't come out. So that is for reading. And I'm going to go into this a little bit in more detail at the end, but what are we doing to help make sure that we're not at that forty percent? In reading, we're doing a lot, starting at the primary, because we know early intervention is the most important. So we are doing MAP testing, which is our progress monitoring. We are making sure that our students are completing the approved reading diagnostic text, test from the commissioner. For kindergarten, it's TEXKIA, which is the Texas Kindergarten Entry Assessment. First through third grade, it's the NWA MAP testing. We're also providing professional development, to provide research-based professional development for all K through three teachers in reading. That goes back to the presentation I did a couple of months ago where we told you about the guided reading, the balanced literacy approach that we're taking at the primary campus. We're also, I'm working very closely with my site-based team to create and develop a professional development plan that's ongoing, long-lasting, and not just one year and we're done. We're also completing, this is our second year, the teachers are completing the TEA reading academies that are designed by House Bill Three. What other things are we doing? We're doing creative scheduling, we're doing instructional coaching. My two instructional coaches were here earlier in the evening. That is a new addition to both the primary and intermediate campuses. We have increased focus on the use of intercession, implementation of purposeful PLC, and strategy to bridge the COVID gaps that we've seen. So that was in reading, but House Bill Three also targets math. So what we're going to do, what we did for reading, we're going to just go through the same outcomes for math. Now, math is much more alarming than the reading. If you can see, the numbers for twenty-twenty-one, we're supposed to be at forty-eight percent. We're at twenty-eight percent in meets and above, and at sixty-one percent, students passing or approaches.
What are, what are y'all doing to break it up?
We're doing everything and anything we can.
What's everything, I mean?
Well, what I just went through right now, we're doing the win time, we're refocusing our win time, which is what I need time, which is our intervention time that's built into the school day. We're doing professional development. My teachers are getting, I think they've already, I had the consultant here three days last week, so we're already at eleven days of professional development just throughout this year. We're looking at the use of intercessions, we're looking at possible grouping of students. So we're doing a lot at the campus during the school day to do this. Today, I had a meeting with my teachers and it's about us focusing even PLCs to make sure that we're targeting those skills, that we see those deficits and that they need to be able to move on to the next skill.
Are we measuring the instruction, the instructor, I mean, kind of teach-to-teacher kind of programs? Or we, I mean, I see that it's in here, but how many, how often do we go back and just evaluate the lessons that were presented? Or like, do you have somebody that overlooks the?
Yeah, so our, that's new this year, we have instructional coaches. But not only instructional coaches do that, but our teacher, myself and my administrators, my assistant principals, along with the intermediate principal and assistant principals are in those rooms daily. And so, and what I tell my teachers is that I'm there to provide that coaching. I'm an instructional, I'm their instructional coach and giving them feedback on, sometimes it's the rigor, sometimes, you know, is it, are they moving on too fast that the students didn't have the skills that they needed, that foundation skills to move on? So that's happening on a daily basis. Our instructional coaches have been instrumental in doing that this year, which we're very lucky to have. I know I have two, Ms. Trevino has two, and the middle school has one, and then high school also has one.
Ms. Trevino, on your special, special education, I mean, are you not getting any help at all because you have zero?
Well, I'm going to tell you that this is the same test that all other students take. So they're expecting for our special education students to be able to perform.
But if they're in the 504 program, you know that the modifications work across the board.
But these aren't 504 students, these are special education students. So these are special education students that we know have those big learning, you know, they need that support.
So you're not special needs students on here in the special education then?
No, those are special education students. But what I'm saying is that they're having to take the same test as the other students with, and it's the same, it's the same test. The state did, before we used to have. Before, we used to have a modified test where they were able to take another test that was more at their level. Because you think about a special education student, these students qualify because they have, they're maybe a level two behind grade level. Well, if they're, they're working at a, you know, at a third, at a first grade level, they're having to take a third grade test. And so it's, it's really hard, and the state put that on us probably about five years ago where they changed, maybe even longer, where they changed the test where it's not equal. And we've said it all along, we can provide every modification for the students and they're still performing, but they're in that approaches, in the approaches level, maybe not at the meets and masters.
So there's nothing you can submit to the state to get modifications for these kids?
Well, they have modifications built into the test, but the test is going to be the same exact test. They're getting the same thing that they usually, they'll, they allow for all students to get. But that's, but that's something that we've really, you know, since they changed it on us.
But these not, these are not your 504 kid, you're, so where are the special need, where are they on these charts?
Well, they're, they're the ones that are the, see, in math, they're at the four percent. But that's your special education students.
Okay, I don't quite understand, so let me just say, like, my son, is he in the special education?
Yes.
But he's a 504.
Is he 504? No, no, he's not 504.
They're, they're two different things.
Yeah, 504 is for general education students, special education is for special education students.
He's IEP.
Yeah, he has IEP.
He has an IEP?
Yeah, so he's in special education. 504 are for students.
Okay, well then, let me go that route. So the kids with the IEP, they don't have modifications in from the state?
On the test, they do, but it's the same test that every other student takes.
Their accommodation or modification might be that it's read to them. They have extended time.
So the state does not modify tests, right? They only accommodate tests, and those are two different things. So it's on the same grade level, they might get it read to them, that's an accommodation. A modification would be like, we're taking a third grade material and bringing it down to first grade, the state no longer does that, hasn't done it for years.
Hasn't done it. So you're thinking maybe like an eighth grade student who's working at a fourth grade level, they're still having to take that eighth grade test and they're functioning at a fourth grade level. And the state wants us to say that they're going to be at meets and masters at a high percentage, you know, and we're just here to tell you the data, you know, it's not our job to.
Change the policy?
Change, you know, we can only do so much, but this came from the legislature and I think they're not in touch with reality.
In terms of your question, 504 students do not get modifications, they only get accommodations.
Accommodations, two different things.
And it's for general education students.
So those numbers in the green, that's the state average?
No, the numbers in the green are what our teachers said we were going to perform at.
Oh, okay.
So when we came in January, that's the number that our teacher said, you know what, by twenty-twenty-one, we're going to be at forty-eight percent.
Wow, that's a big.
But this was, those numbers were done before COVID. Those numbers were pre-COVID. I met with them when I was still in this position, which is almost two years ago. And so those numbers don't reflect what happened within these two years.
Does the state have an average that you could, that we could?
No, it's based on every district. So every district comes up with their own goals. So after this, every, like, since we're a K through two campus, we're going to put it on our website, but every school has to report this. So I can go to Mathis and I can see what their goals were. And no one is, there's not a goal police where they're coming saying, oh, you didn't meet your goal. This is just for us to be accountable at the lower levels and say, we're doing our part to catch those students out.
It's an internal goal.
Yeah, it's an internal goal. And what, what I had conversation today with my teachers was that at our level, that's when we can start bridging, I mean, start closing the gap the fastest. When our kinder students don't know their letters and their sounds, by the time they leave kinder, they need to know their letters and their sounds and be blending and getting ready for first grade. My teachers in kinder have a huge responsibility to make sure that they're first grade ready. Those first grade teachers need to make sure that those students, if they did have deficits, they're going back to the kinder level. Because by the time they get to a third grade level and they're functioning at a first grade level, that's already two years and no one has time for that when they get to intermediate. So this is holding us accountable at the lower levels.
The program you run or you oversee, is there federal funds available for you?
Of course, we are still a title campus, so we have all the title funds available to us. On top of that, we were given early childhood money, early education allotment. And so that money also is used for anything that has to do with reading and math from kinder through third grade, just for those grades. So the state did give us some money and they give it to us every year and we are using that wisely with our coaches and trainings and materials. Oh, our paras, every grade level has a para, an instructional para. This is not a para that's running copies and doing errands for the teacher, this is someone who's actually in the classroom, working with students in the classroom. So we have some salary-funded positions in there as well. And that goes along for every grade level, for kinder, well, all our pre-K have paras, but every kinder, first and second grade.
And third.
And third grade this year, there's one para, but for fourteen teachers. There's one PERS, but for 14 teachers or 15 teachers. So we're having to come up with flexible scheduling for them as well.
Mr. Carroll, has there been a time that you might remember or recall where we have returned any special education money back to the state?
Last year? For the last two years, we've had to return a little bit. Because that's, that's under maintenance of effort. The rule is, if you spend special ed, if you're special education allocation, whatever you spend, you can never, ever go down unless you've got certain circumstances that happen. And because of COVID for the, because of COVID for the last two years, we weren't fully, I mean, we just, just because of the year, we didn't replace some people. We just, our expenditures dropped across the board because of COVID. So for the last two years, we have not what they call ma- maintenance of effort. But that's, that's, that, that goes to, they allocate what you're getting in tax money and what you're getting in state money based upon what your, what your population is, your ADA, your special ed students. They come up with a formula, and they come up, and they say, you can't spend less than what you spent the year before. So you pretty much have to spend higher and higher and higher. And if you have a year that you, even if you have a year that you just, you could spend $5 left, and you gotta spend, you gotta send that $5 back.
So now it's gonna take us a while to get back up to that spending? It's not gonna be?
I'm hoping that I can get it back up to, to where it was so we don't have to, so we don't have to send any money back.
Well, then I, we all better be praying that it does, because otherwise, we're, we're deceiving our own purpose. If we cannot get the funding that we need to either hire the right personnel or use the right books or whatever, what's the sense? I mean, you know, we're not able to teach these kids, educate these kids the way the educational system was set up to be done in the first place. So it concerns me.
I will tell you that trying to meet maintenance of effort, it's not, our goal is, every position that we say we need, we try to fill it, we do it. I mean, we're, we're, we're not saying, oh, wait, we don't wanna do that anymore. No, we're doing it. It's just, it's just, I, I can tell you, because of COVID, we just, all the activities dropped. We just, we just didn't spend as much as we had normally spent these last two years because of COVID.
Well, are there conversations with parents and students that aren't meeting, maybe not approaching? Do they retain those students?
Well, that they're not set up to. We have, because we are a title campus, we have to have parent-teacher conferences. And we're just finishing those up in the fall. So every teacher has to meet with a parent. And our goal was for every teacher to meet with them, make every effort to meet with them in person, if not via Zoom. But they are to make contact and go over where their child is in regards to their, to their, their data that we have gathered on them. So parents are aware. There have been a lot of implications because of this. We're kind of thinking, okay, what, what has caused for this to happen? Because this is not where we saw ourselves. So as I go on in a, in a few slides, we'll talk about what we think really attributed to these scores. But also, we're not gonna just sit and just wait around for the, for things to magically happen or get back to normal. We're really working, you know, to make sure that those scores come back up, because that's where we pictured ourselves. But this is something that across the state of Texas that we're faced with. And our teachers.
And we can't, like, our third graders, these third graders that are now our fourth graders under House Bill 4545, we had to, we spent the first intercession having accelerated learning plan committee meetings. And all of those students have a plan in place. So all of those students are getting intervention daily in math or reading or in both, depending on what they did or didn't pass.
I'm delighted to hear that, because to lose a child, you know, their education because of our inability to be able to fund the, the, the programs that are needed for them to learn is really, it's ludicrous, and it's ridiculous.
And we're very lucky that they gave us the money. The state did provide us with money to help with this. So that's why every teacher is attending the reading academies. And they're doing that on their own time. So with the early children, we're able to pay them for doing it on their own time. But our teachers are faced with this every day, and they want to know also what they need to do to do this. So even today, our PLCs are gonna be focused on interventions. That's all our PLCs will be, which is that early release on Wednesdays, is what are we gonna do in the classroom while we have them for that one hour of instruction built into the day that is meant for interventions? So this was the math, and we have a long way to go in math as well. This is actually lower than what we, and the, the action steps are gonna be very similar to what we said for reading. You can go to the next slide. But what we, what we do right now is that we're watching our kids. We're taking data on our kids. So last year, our kinder, our kinder students in February, because that's when we did this testing, we saw that 63% of them were at above average or above average or high when it came to this test. Now, there was a slight dip in 50, to 51%, but the program also adjusts as the students go through the school year. So we saw that there was that drop. And then in fall, it shows that they're still, those are our first graders right now. So we're watching them, and tells us that at least 50% of our students are at that Meets or Masters. But we need to be able to get that closer to 100%. So that way, when we send them on to the next grade level, that's just telling me that they're where they need to be. But our students do have deficits that we're trying to find. And that was in reading. And then the next one is also in math. Because we progress monitor them, we're getting ready to progress monitor as soon as we come back from Thanksgiving break. We did a test in August. We're gonna do a test in December to see where they're at, to see the growth they've made. And then we will do one again at the end of the year to, to monitor their growth, to see if they're making those gains that we hope that they're making.
Ms. D'Avino, this was the one that actually concerned me, and I didn't turn my paper. But in this math portion right here, when, when I looked at it, maybe I'm looking at this wrong, so I'm gonna ask you. Because I, I now understand then where the, where the green and the yellow and all that came from. So I get it. Y'all, y'all basically had a snapshot. This is where, was where we wanna be in this particular year. The, the yellow was your actual, your, your current actual status. And the green was just the people that were, weren't need to work on increasing yellows numbers. So I get that today even more so than I did reading this. But where I was concerned with this math, this, this slide here was that you had an increase in your kindergarten in your math, regardless of it was COVID or not COVID. You had an increase. Your second grade is actually, you did have a dip in the spring in first grade, but it went, it went even higher when you started school. Right? Second grade kind of, kind of went just sliding down.
Yeah.
Can, could, did we, can we go back and focus on what might have occurred? Spring of 2021 to fall of 2021?
Well, and those are our second graders who have now moved on to intermediate. So those students are now our third graders this year. So Ms. Trevino is working with her teachers to find those intervention pieces that they're getting to, to figure that out. Because we're, we're tracking them from campus to campus now. So we tracked them from, at the end of spring, they were still at the primary, they were at 56%. When they moved over to 47. Now, this is also, probably the rigor has increased because it's a star grade level. So the, the map kind of, that testing, it kind of aligns itself with that. So it shows us where they need to be. So that's kind of, that's where we're at with that one. And I can't tell you what the, what the cause of that is, but it is our job to go back and find out where, where it is that they have those deficits.
Right, because by the time they get to Mr. Overado, I mean, that's.
Oh, I know. Middle school too. By the time they get to middle school, you know.
That's a lot of work to catch up.
And, you know, we've seen over the years, as we've been tracking data, that our math scores have really stayed stagnant. And now we're trying, we're starting to see maybe a dip in our math scores. So we've been focusing a lot, a lot, a lot on reading. And it seems that our math is the one that is suffering because of that.
Do these age group, grade kids, do they do, have homework?
At the primary campus, we do not have homework.
No homework, okay.
Okay. We believe that, because home, at our age, the homework is usually a struggle with the parents. So much has changed with, with math and teaching that I feel that it's our job to make sure that we're doing the best job possible while we have them. And when they're with families, I, I believe it's family time. You know, we encourage our parents to read with the students, to go over sight words with the students, to go over math facts with the students. But it's our job to educate the student. And when they go home, you know.
And Ms. D'Avino, I don't think there's a single member in this board that didn't have to do mathematics in front of their parents, you know, when, when we were kids. So asking them to, to get out of a comfort zone, I think we're creating that comfort zone too big. And that could be where the drop is at.
Well, research shows that homework has minimal gains. Minimal, like, research shows that homework is the last thing that's gonna, that's gonna help our students. If they don't have good primary instruction, if they don't have interventions from a certified teacher in the classroom during the school day, me sending home a worksheet so they can do something wrong over and over and over again. Honestly, that's what research shows. And I'm, I, I really feel that we need to make sure that students have a well-rounded education. And that means going home and being kids when they go home in the evening.
Yeah, well, now, most families, both parents work. So the last thing they wanna do is come home and do homework.
And honestly, when, when we, when we get the homework back, how many times has it been wrong? You know? And they, they've just done it wrong 10 times now. So now I'm having to come back and reteach them or redo it with them.
So they can go home and teach the parent?
So it's our job.
Maybe, maybe it's because we had a book, and I guess, I don't know. We took books home.
It's very different now. I will tell you. Math is completely different now. Math, they moved the seventh grade teaks back in 2014. They moved, if they were seventh grade, they moved them down to fourth grade. So now, fourth grade students have to do what seventh graders used to have to do. So our parents haven't been in school forever, so they're relying on YouTube and Google to help them with those things. So yes, so we are looking into what is causing that. And we are addressing it. So here are the possible implications. And I can't blame everything on COVID, but COVID did have a big part of it. Lack of instructional continuity. Our students were here, then they were virtual, then they were back virtual, then they were back here, and then they were gone because they had to quarantine. And then, so we just think that lack of instructional continuity had a big factor in the scores. Also, at the primary campus, we had asynchronous instruction, meaning the kids did not have to log in live with the teacher. That was a state. The state said for kinder through second grade, you can't require students to have to do check-ins with the teacher and get live instruction from the teacher. So they went to, we went to asynchronous. That means we put videos up there, and if they saw it, they saw it. If they didn't, they didn't. We had no way of making sure that they actually learned what was provided for them via a video that our teachers created. Student attendance. There were students who attended, but they were on Zoom, and you could see them rolling on the bed. You could see them not paying attention. They were playing with toys. They were showing everything. So they were attending, but some were not truly participating. The student engagement. And, and that's true, because we saw it all the time on, on Zoom. It was a new teaching modality. Our teachers had never taught virtually. And now we're telling them, here you go. Now, this is your new way of teaching, with no training for them. They were just kind of like, here you go. Let, let's hope we, we make it through this, this time. And we didn't think it would continue as long as it did. And of course, our students now are faced with a social and emotional delay due to lack of traditional school. They're coming to us with social, emotional needs. We're having to teach them how to say thank you and please, and yes, ma'am, and no, ma'am, things that we never thought we would have to in the past. So where do we go from here? And this is exactly what we're doing already, okay? We are unpacking our student data. We're looking at data. We're looking at our math scores. We're very lucky that math actually gives us the TEAC that we would need to start from to get our students to be able to get to where they are meeting that standard. We're gonna identify the educational deficits. So what TEAC is it that they're needing for us to go back to? Strategic targeting of deficit skills. If this student needs letter knowledge, we're gonna go back to letter knowledge. I don't care if they're in second grade, first grade. We're gonna go back, and everyone's gonna have a prescription, almost like Mrs. Trevino said. Restructure that win time. That is that one hour of intervention that instruction stops and intervention starts. So there's no new teaching going on. It's all based on what that student needs, okay? What I need time. So that's, that, and now we have Education Galaxy. We have other, other resources that we can use to pool for students. that we can use to pool for students. And of course, continued professional development, because now our teachers are faced with an even bigger um, job to do and go back and teach. And if they might be second grade teachers, they might have to go back to kinder skills. So they're having to go back and learn a lot. So continue professional development, especially when it comes to intervention for our students. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Now Dr. White is going to tell us about college career and military readiness, another goal. This is what the state determined that we needed to be looking at in detail. Both ends of the spectrum.
Yes, from one end to the other, just like that. So we'll talk CCMR as it relates to high school. So again, just real quick, why do we set outcome goals? Well, first of all, it's part of policy, specifically EA. And just like what Ms. Dabila already kinda went into, um, each plan must include those four pieces of criteria listed. What makes um, CCMR unique at the high school level is the potential for bonus funding from DEA. And so part of HB3 offers the opportunity to receive outcome bonuses for students demonstrating CCMR. The goals for CCMR should reflect multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate CCMR and keep in mind the requirement for the HB3 outcome bonus requires students to continue into post-secondary and the military. So what that means is that there are specific indicators that students need to meet in order to show DEA that they are post-secondary and/or military ready. And so here are the accountability indicators for CCMR. These have been updated. There have been no changes, so to speak, to the 11 indicators, other than for number 11, Armed Forces. The state has taken a year off as far as how they are reporting um, the district data from students indicating that they are uh, enlisting into the Armed Forces. Um, and so that's being worked on right now. So technically, right now, that's not being factored in as an indicator, but it will be in uh, 2023, because that will be the accountability reset year. So these indicators are coming forward as the state is resetting the accountability once more, which we will see um, in 2023. The other big indicator change comes with TSI. Um, and you'll see an arrow there because that is one of our progress measures that I'll um, give you an update on in just a bit. But as far as the update to TSI, um, right now, uh, it has been repackaged into what we are now referring to as TSIA2. And it's just um, another fancy term to basically call TSI, what we already call it, TSI. It's just uh, a repackaging of that exam and using some different data points to capture what we already capture. And so there's really no difference, so to speak, with that test, just in terms of how they are reporting the results. So the board outcome goal for CCMR at the high school level, um, DEA's goal is 60% of graduates will meet CCMR standards by 2024. Our district goal is that we will go to 72% by that time. And so um, you'll see a bunch of numbers here. I've indicated that 2019 is our baseline, because in 2020, COVID happened. And so 2019 is what we, what we will be looking at as a true indicator of our student performance. And right now, we are kind of in limbo as we are waiting for the updated uh, performance report from DEA, so that we can know a little bit more specifically about those subpopulations for 2021 that do not have any data listed. And so that information should be coming to us in the next month or two. And once we receive those results, we will have a really good idea just what kind of deficits or um, enrichment pieces that we will be looking at for those particular groups. And so right now, we are kind of gauging everything based on the 2019 data. And you'll see that from 2019, the district total was 63%. We went to 74% the following year, and then we dipped in 2021 with 66%. So right now, from the state, in 2021, all we have are totals. Like I said earlier, we do not have specific subpopulation data, we are waiting on that. So one of the reasons why you'll note a decrease from 2019, 2020 to 21, is because of how they have changed some of the indicators as far as how we are reporting those standards. So for instance, CTE, Core Sequencing, was a indicator that was able to be taken advantage of during the 2019 and 2020 school years. But for 2021, that is no longer being reported as the case, because we are moving away from just asking students to simply follow a sequen, sequence and complete. But what the state is really pushing now, as they increase those standards, is for students to walk away with a certification, or some sort of certificate, or some sort of deliverable that allows that student to enter into post-secondary or um, a, a career pathway, ready for that career. And so that is the focus now from the state, not so much are students completing a sequence, but what are they graduating with that will help them as soon as they decide that they are wanting to go start a career or go into college? Are there any questions about the board goal? And again, once we get the subpopulation data for 2021, that will um, allow us to revisit some of these long-term goals that have been set, so that we can more accurately project out what we need to do with the latest data. For progress measure one, in order to be able to get to that uh, CCMR board goal, um, one of the things I do wanna point out is that the DEA output measure 1.2.27 is a specific criteria for this progress measure, which is looking at IBCs, those industry-based certifications that students are really being pushed by the state to be able to uh, attain, so that again, they can graduate with something in their hands that allows them to be better prepared for a college or career um, opportunity. And so for this progress measure, the goal for TMIC is to increase the number of students successfully completing a DEA-approved IBC from 4.5% in August 2019 to 51% by August 2024. And you'll see a dramatic increase from our baseline in 2019 to 2020, because of our ability at the high school to offer multiple opportunities for students to become certified and...
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Because I got, I'm confused now.
Yeah.
So the green, the green boxes are base, right?
Right, because that was pre-COVID, meaning that all that data is accurate.
But in the CCMR, in 2020, we did better.
Correct.
The first green. Same thing here. Now, this one has an increase all the way through in the total district goes and what we're looking for.
Mm-hmm.
So this is more genuine here, but, so then you don't have the data to break down on the um, on the closing of the gaps, I guess is what...
Right, we don't have that yet.
So, but, I guess in the C, the CTE students, we're, we're, we're way above everything.
Way above. And we have it for a, for a good while.
Where in your college career, your military readiness, you have a drop. But you have three categories in this one over here. Is there any data to show each category, what, what the percentage might be? Not, not the ethnicity, the category, like college, who went to college?
Yes.
Who jumped into the workforce?
To answer your question, if you can recall back a couple months, I gave a CTE uh, presentation update, a program update, and I kinda went through all the CCMR verifier, the tracker, um, the IBCs, all of the indicators and how we are tracking those specific indicators. What the CCMR board goal is asking is for us to look at two specific indicators that will help us uh, reach that, that CCMR board goal, which we're already above anyways. But specifically for this plan, we just chose two. Um, I'm not sure exactly how those were chosen, because that happened before me. So I basically inherited this plan and um, I'm trying to work with it as it was currently uh, created. So that's kind of the reason why those goals were chosen, because that came before me. But uh, just to talk a little bit more about progress measure one, um, what I can say, and it's a testament to uh, the administrators before myself, before I got here and before Mr. Oliver arrived, was that there was a, a very sharp and laser-like focus on being able to offer the most amount of industry-based certifications that we could to our students at that time. And as we've gotten more familiar with CTE and the rules that govern CTE, we've been able to increase the amount of offerings for our certifications through different and various programs that we weren't currently being able to offer before, either because it was something we didn't know about, or because our teacher wasn't quite ready to become uh, qualified to offer that certification, because there's a lot of logistical work needing to be done in order to situate everybody to be able to take that uh, or to be able to earn that certification. And so um, I can go back and kind of revisit those uh, slides if I need to from the, the couple months back with my CTE presentation, but generally speaking, that was kind of just giving you all that update about the new certifications we're offering, the increases in our programs of study, which all is specifically related to what I'm talking about today. So it's all happening. It's just, as you all know, with COVID, and sometimes the data is lagging in how they release it, it creates kind of a disconnect. So I'm sure that's kind of the reason why some of this seems confusing. But um, once the taper report, the performance report for 2021 gets released, we will know a lot more about what's happening specifically with our subpopulations, which will then uh, drive any updates that we will make to these slides that you're seeing today. So basically, this presentation's coming a little bit before it probably should, just because that data has not been released yet. And the other progress measure is with TSI. Um, TSI is the college readiness test that students have to perform at a certain standard in order to be able to go into a four-year university. And so again, DEA is um, making TSI part of their goals and what they will be tracking. And so for us as a district, uh, we are looking to increase the number of students meeting TSIA2 criteria in both reading and math from 31% to 33% by August 2024. Because remember, in 2019, TSIA2 looked like TSI. And so that test has evolved, become more rigorous, is expecting more from our students. And so it's not like it's an apples-to-apples comparison, um, but we're trying to make it as such. And so that's why you don't see the numbers increase as much as you probably would like to see, just because the test has become harder. And as we rework some things at the high school, um, we just need to make sure that our level of rigor and our um, level of relevance when it comes to preparing our students for TSI, we're doing all of that. So part of our um, ability in doing that is making sure our teachers are updated on this test, making sure that we've created a master schedule that lends itself specifically to TSI, because it's not like students can just sign up to take a TSI class. A lot of the TSI work comes on, um, from outside work and cut that they have to do on their own. And that is something that we will look to try to build into the master schedule for next school year, just as if you've heard tonight, middle school has created a advisory period, a 30 to 45-minute flex period where we can do a bunch of different things grouping-wise with students, um, material and curriculum-wise with the students. The high school is looking to do something similar next year, where we could take advantage of the same concept, but instead of talking about potentially STAR or EOC, we're talking about TSI. We're talking about advanced placement. We're talking about some of those tests that students could truly benefit from more um, a, a continuation of what they would be learning in their class, but through a specific intervention block period where they're getting extra help in that. Yes, sir.
So the TSI, they can take that at, at, on campus, correct?
We are a TSI testing site, yes.
So how often do they, is that available?
Uh, we try to offer it once in the fall and once in the spring, just as we off, offer ACT, SAT, everything else.
Right, so if they take the ACT, do they still need to take the TSI?
Yes, because they're different...
That helps you off?
Yes, it helps us, but it also provides that student with another opportunity to showcase their abilities, because the tests are not the same. And perhaps maybe that particular student might do better on one versus the other. And so we always encourage that student to take all the exams, because you just don't know which one might speak to you, so that you are showcasing what you actually can do and not just take one test that doesn't really, you know, work for you testing-wise and you've left some of your abilities um, on the table, so to speak, just because you didn't quite take the right test.
And there's also a timing requirement, so Delmar requires the passage quarter to take dual-credit courses. So TSI is for those kids is needed almost after their 10th grade year, and it wouldn't be prudent to take a SAT or ACT that early without having that math that you would need your junior year to be highly successful.
And just one thing to keep in mind with the TSI, um, if students are able to perform at a specific level on their EOC exams, that will also meet the criteria for TSI. And so there are multiple ways to do it. That's why it's super important, like what Ms. Dabila said earlier about strategic targeting of our students, so that we know that if we kind of go this path with them, whether it's trying to meet criteria through STAR, meet the criteria through TSI, meet the criteria through SAT, ACT, AP, we know we're putting our students in the best position to do so. Not just because it's easy to group everybody together, make them all take the TSI and hope and pray that they all do well, but specifically pathing students correctly so that they are going to be in the best position to be successful. And so to kind of bring it all back together with some strategies uh, for, for the high school, um, as far as just college, career and life readiness, uh, we've done a couple things. We're trying to increase the CTE social media presence. And so one of the things that we did to gear up and get ready for the CTE symposium was we created a CTE department page on Facebook to help promote that event. Zello, with an X, um, is our new CCMR program, um, that we are in the early stages of implementing at the moment, which is going to help align K through 12 programming for our students so that we are using a singular program that will allow students to have a profile that will carry with them throughout their um, public school career, that will allow counselors, teachers and administrators to truly track their CCMR kind of profile and some of the potential goals that they will be working on all the way through. And so we're really excited about that program, because it's gonna help us be able to manage the data a little bit better, just because when you talk about CCMR, you talk about 11 indicators, that's a lot. And so this program's gonna help streamline everything, and it's also gonna help our counselors specifically be able to better understand how they can help support students through CCMR, not just help students graduate, but graduate with a purpose, making sure that they're meeting specific criteria. Um, the second piece, protocols and procedures. As uh, we presented tonight, the secondary grading guidelines is gonna help tremendously with that by increasing the standard to make sure all students are um, doing so. And then what we will continue to work on is our master schedule planning calendar, so that month by month, week by week, our administrators, our counselors, our teachers are fully aware of what that month looks like, and they can get a good year at a glance to understand the progression of how each school year looks and goes. Student engagement, um, one of the things that we will start this week, uh, specifically on Wednesday at the high school, with the middle school, is we're gonna bring together the secondary school counselors for a CTE luncheon, so that we can begin calibrating our understanding of the latest updates from the state, because there have been a lot. And also in terms of gearing up for second semester course selections, so that our counselors are all communicating to the students the same way. When we talk about graduation plans, when we talk about uh, career classes, we are communicating um, effectively, we're communicating in the right way. And we're hoping that with those luncheons, we'll be able to do just that. And then of course, uh, this past Saturday, we had our CTE symposium, our, not first annual, right? But inaugural. We had our inaugural CTE symposium on Saturday, which was a really uh, fun experience to be able to kind of put that on for the community. Uh, right now, we're going through the data, but uh, so far, we have, we had around 150 to 200 students come through. And it was a whole bunch of students that I have not seen before, and it was a different look as far as being able to kind of uh, engage uh, certain groups and individuals that might not have been engaged before. So um, it was a great experience, we learned a lot from it. Um, we had a whole bunch of industry partners come out too, to help support that as well. And um, any parent that I was able to speak to about the event gave uh, really good feedback. Um, I think the key word that was used more often than not was informative. It was just an informative experience. And so we're excited that that was something that we were able to start and hopefully uh, we're able to continue to build on for years to come. Partnerships, one of the other ways we're gonna continue to work on our CCMR goals is through the Contigo Ed projects. Um, we started that last semester and we're uh, taking a bit of a break right now as we kind of get things situated from all the legislative updates, and we will resume that with them second semester. And what that is, is that they help us track and monitor the data. So make sure that what we are doing data-wise, they're able to replicate on their end, so that what we're doing is accurate. And if we're not accurate or we miss something, they help fill in those gaps so that we are accurate. And then the other piece, that's relatively new that uh, we're working on currently, is an MOU with TAMUCC. One of the reasons why we are trying to get that in place is because they have um, some of the engineering, STEM and robotics and drones programs that are unique to that campus. And uh, we wanna be able to tap into that for our students so that we can continue to grow our STEM program at the high school. Another key part to that as well, if we decide to move forward as a DOI district, um, that partnership will help us uh, be able to graduate students with an associate's degree, because then we will be able to identify certain groups for acceleration. And having this university partnership will allow us to be able to do just that. And the last thing, again, kind of just bringing it all back together, is just making sure that we're being data-driven in our decision-making. And two ways we will continue to do that is through our uh, CCMR indicator tracker, um, as I presented a couple months back to you all, and also that CCMR, CCMR verifier that gets released to us from the state. And that concludes this presentation. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. White.
Dr. White, there's one more question.
This is an action item. It is the administration's recommendation that the Board of Trustees approve the board goals as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Felix has made the most, we have a secretary's chance. Any comments, questions? Appreciate all the presentation and the energy that went into making that and keeping track of it. And it's going to affect all of our kids and help them out, that's the main thing, educational process of all of them.
I'd like to say that that was an excellent presentation. I really enjoyed it.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Uh-huh. I have one question. On the GO question, um, that's the only two GOs that we're gonna approve then, or those are the ones that are set, since we didn't have any board GOs? We're only gonna accept the ones that the state gave us then?
Correct. At this time.
The, the two, okay.
At this time.
Okay. Go ahead.
Once again, all those in favor. Those opposed, motion carries, six zero. Speaking of GOs, we do have... Speaking of GOs, we do have them, it's just objectives.
These are the ones that the state has required you to have.
The ones that the state requires.
Okay. Board operating procedures. I know you've had a chance to read and enjoy them, and I'm not going to read them to, I'm not going to read them to you tonight, but I do want to make a couple of points. You had board operating goals before. What I did was I went through and I pulled out all the board policies that relate to it, and when I made them red, that was the addition to what you had. So for example, on page seven, I added here board member authority because I thought that was important, to have authority, and where your authority lies. Then the next one, the point out, is page 10, on board meetings, the meeting agenda. This was in board policy, but we had, did not have it in your board operating procedures. Roman numeral six, number two, if you want to add something to it, to the agenda, the deadline for board members to submit items for inclusion on the agenda is the first calendar day before regular meetings and the third calendar day before special meetings. So for a Monday board meeting, the agenda item must be submitted to the board president by Wednesday, for clarification. And that's so, you know, if you're presenting it Friday, right when we're getting ready to send it out, that changes up the dynamics of everything we have to do. And then, of course, 72 hours is your notice. The next one is on page 11. Consent agenda, these are the normal things that we do. We added the word check register. And in D4, voting shall be by show of hands for yes or no, as directed by the presiding officer. Any member may abstain from voting, and a member's vote or failure to vote shall be recorded upon that member's name. The board president may vote on all action items. Okay? And number six, in case it's a split vote, like if you have six present and it's three and three, the motion does not pass. Then we've had some changes on public forum from the legislature, on page 12. Public comment shall be scheduled at the beginning of the meeting, and during regular board meetings, the topics can be on the agenda or not, but at special meetings, they can only be on what is posted for the meeting. Okay? And on page, also on page 12, about in the middle, I have the speaker shall state the topic and then proceed. No presentations shall exceed, it's three minutes, and I had five. So five was in your old policy, I will now change it to three.
Mr. Carr, I have a question. If these are board policies and procedures, they're truthfully coming from our interim superintendent. I know, I know your letter says that you stated this to the board president, but wouldn't this be more of something that the board would have gotten together? I mean, I know we had a first reading on this, but it was just exactly that, there wasn't very little discussion at the time about this, but as we've gone deeper and deeper into these, or I did, I shouldn't include everybody else. I, I guess it's kind of like the local policies that come down that we just approve and really never discuss, that just bring up, it brings up a little bit of a concern to me that, that I'm wondering here, I mean, I read it the first time, I've reread it this time, but the rewriting of it, I mean, should they just be called meeting GOs or, I mean, because-
Which one are you referring to, John?
Just all in general, Paul, I mean, we didn't, we didn't talk, we didn't talk about none of this.
The board operating procedures have been in place for a number of years, it's just a modification of them.
There's a lot of red, there's a lot of red that she added to it.
There's some modification that is put in there, but it's all dealing from local policy.
Yeah. And I have the policies here to back it up. I think they were in your packet for November 1, but I didn't get to speak to that, so if you'll each take a policy.
Well, I have a question, and my concern is on-
Did you get one too?
Yeah. My concern is that in the policy, yeah, you, you address all members, like the president's role. Well, I guess I can look it up.
What page is it on, sir? Page 14?
Let me get there. You have, there's a lot of red. Since the president, president shall preside at all board meetings unless unable to attend. Have the right to discuss, make motions and resolutions, and vote on all matters coming before the board. Shall appoint committees, shall call special meetings, cite all legal documents required by law. First-time board presidents must attend board president training within 90 days of election. That's his role, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But here, when you made all these changes, it states, I have revised the current, like the second paragraph, I revised the current board operating procedures for ease of reading, the sentences that I added are in red. And then it goes down to say, board president, Paul Mustela had no opportunity to read the proposed procedures and provide input, input. I mean, why not all of us have input?
Well, he's-
Well, I know, I mean, I want her to answer that, I mean, I'm asking her.
It was really an enormous task, and because he is the one who had written and knew about the board operating procedures in the past, because he's done training with new members.
His description doesn't say that he's alone shall have input.
No, but that's what we're doing here today, is if you want to have input, you can. I need to, I'm asking-
There's, there's action to be taken on this, so-
And if you don't want to have action tonight, we can roll it forward to another meeting. Because it is a lot.
There is a lot. Now, the, it was given to us what, before last board meeting, right?
I gave it to you November 1st.
November 1st, on that. We had all that, had an introduction to it, came out, had time to look at it, it's just a few modifications.
There's a few modifications, there's a lot of-
There's a few modifications for existing things that brought it up to date according to new state guidelines and board policies. So if you have an objection to it, that's fine, we can, we can put any postponing off to it, to another meeting. But do you object that anything in here that is the guidelines for a good board operating procedure?
Well, there's, you know, I've been, I have to study it a little bit more, Paul, you're, you know, I just got this whole thing-
I'm asking a question.
Yeah, well, I, there might be some that, that I don't agree with. And, but what I really don't agree with, let me just tell you what I don't agree with, is that interim superintendent is telling the board how we're going to run the board. I don't agree with that. I think the board itself should get together, have a workshop, and discuss board policies or board procedures, operating procedures. That's what I think should happen.
Initially, that's where this came from, it was just a modification.
But with your fault, I mean, that's what I, you know, we, I mean, a lot of this is introduced into a policy book, and you're, and you know, I mean, in honesty, I mean, we don't have that many board, or full board meetings together where we go over local things. It seems like we just get them at the first reading and second reading, we approve. There's no discussion about the things that the board can actually do in action.
We have changed, John, we have changed part of the local policies, you know, you can't do anything back.
Oh, no, I know.
You know as well, is, we have gone back at the first readings and changed things in local policy, we have. So it's not just a, here it is, read it, first reading, second reading. No, we have made modifications after first reading, you know that, you could give it for that. But what, what I'm getting at is, this has been in place for a number of years, it was developed for the board, by the board, it's just a modification of it. Now, if y'all want to go into a further, have a workshop, we can do that. But all of this is based on everything. New board members, every new board member has gotten the older sets of board ethics and board operating procedures.
Well, I would like to do a workshop with it.
You, well, we can have one. That means it's another meeting that we have to have for that. So, but the whole thing is, is while you look at this and study it, you can't object to what is good operating procedures and ethics for board members that is in here, but it's tied to local policy.
And that's great, but what I was focused on was the red. So because there's a lot of it, I wasn't able to study the whole policy of it, so that's what I would like time to do, and I just don't-
That's fine, we will have a meeting on it. But what I'm getting at is things that are tied to local policy, which are modifications, which are in policy and tied into board operating procedures and ethics. It's what a good board should be doing, and to object to any of it is-
Well, there's a lot of things a good board should be doing that's not being done.
Operating procedures, yeah.
Well, and really, your operating procedures should be reviewed every year, and one of the things I'm trying-
I mean, here, here, we never, we haven't done it yet.
I'm sorry. What I'm trying to do is the interim, is to prepare a thing so that when you do get your regular superintendent, that they're, that they know what the rules are and that you've agreed that you're going to follow your already established board policy, and you're ready to go. I'm just trying to help out.
That's, that's the main thing, is because you came in in November of last year, well, actually, in that part of it, review of everything that goes on, just like a board self, board self-evaluation is supposed to be done every year as well, which we're going to discuss. But we will set up another meeting for this and have a little workshop, so there will be no-
I suggest a four-hour workshop at least.
Okay, that'll be fine, a four-hour, yeah, Saturday morning?
Saturday morning, I don't care.
Y'all, y'all think about that and figure out where you'd like to do that, or when, and please let me know.
Okay.
Oh, no, not this Saturday. No, no.
Not this Saturday.
No, on a Saturday.
I just said the word, Saturday.
I know, but not this Saturday.
Okay. Would y'all do, do us a favor and hold on to this so we don't have to keep printing copies?
And just realize that this is just backed up by local policy and everything, and there, and it is, when we initially did this years ago, and it was revised, I think Rodney did some, he started working on some revision, didn't he? Chrissy?
Yes, sir.
And maybe there needs to be more revisions too.
You know when the last, Mr. Carr, do you know when the last update on that was?
I don't have it down.
That's what I'm saying, maybe there needs to be newer revisions also. Times are changing every year.
Agreed, but operating procedures, oh, once you, you study it, keep ethical operating procedures, you're doing it right. All right, well, we will put that off, just let me know when y'all would like to have it, and we will plan it in the future, and we'll pick a Saturday for you. Okay, discuss and-
After hunting season.
After hunting season, huh? You sound like, you sound like my guys at work now. Okay, discuss and consider, you might as well certify agenda, I think that was the next thing, I'll put an agenda up there somewhere.
Yes, this, a board member brought this to my attention about having certified agendas, which is the way we've been doing it, and wanting to offer that we do recorded closed session agendas. Do you want to speak on that?
Yes, I would like to, well, I wanted to put it on the agenda, but you already made a recommendation on it. I wanted to discuss, I guess we can still discuss it, right? It's not a problem.
Sure.
But what I wanted to, like Mr. Getta said in that presentation that was so-so, but he said, he, he said that the record, the closed session should be recorded, and I agree with him on that part. And I'm not worried about what I'm going to say, I'm more worried about what I'm not saying, you know, so there's no secret, I, I don't, I, you know, Osher has the pen and pencil with him and paper, and I don't know what's in there. I'm, I'm going to request that, since I've been on the board, I want to see, and I read that that was my right to do that, and I can come in here, sit here on a Saturday if you want, and read through all the, the minutes of the closed session, which I will be requesting, but I think if it's recorded, there's no doubt on what's being recorded versus what's been writ, what's being written. So that was my purpose of that. It goes to the same safe, I would imagine, anyway.
Well, having technology involved, it would take up more space for storage rather than just an envelope. But also, one of the things that I would be concerned about, this district is over 100 years old, and the technology changes, I'd be concerned that some of the closed session agendas wouldn't be maintained.
Well, I mean, I would think a disk, it's a lot smaller than, than an envelope that would be the recording, because even a flash drive, if you put all the recording in a flash drive, it's going to take a lot less space than this, you could probably put 100 recordings versus one.
Well, I think they're put in a regular white envelope, not the big brown one.
Well, even a scan disc is extremely small versus an envelope, I mean, it would fit in an envelope. So my reasoning is that, like I said, I don't have any beefs about saying it, I'm not worried about what I'm saying, and I don't think there should be a problem with it being recorded.
I think there should be a local policy to be, rather than legal, to define exactly what's recorded, I don't think attorneys can be recorded. I'm not sure as a personnel, I would want, if I was that personnel being talked about, I'm, I'm not sure I would want that recorded. And I understand that according to legal, you can only get these recordings or consent agenda items, a board member can come in and have the privilege of looking at it, or for, I, I'm not sure, maybe even a past board member, but it's a court order.
Yes.
To get that recording or that certified agenda.
A board member can request the recording and view it-
I, I understand that, but I'm saying, can I finish?
But a judge, a judge-
Somebody else wants it, yeah.
I'm just saying, unless there's a local policy, I won't consent.
I, I'm going to, I'm going to let you guys know, I did, you know, I did feel that gentleman's question should be answered, because when we sat in the training, it sounded to me like it was common practice. And I think that, you know, when he brought that concern to me, I think that there was something, you know, I looked at this like, I said, well, you know, you're right, because when we're sitting here talking, when this gentleman was talking, I didn't even catch his name, it turned out together. You know, he, he pointed that out, and it seems like we, I mean, we went from a tape recorder recording our sessions to this guy's. I mean, I think if we're going to move into this, this data era, I mean, I, I've sat in Stevens' shoes, and sometimes it's, you know, I know that in my case, it would be, you know, what goes in that piece of paper, and I mean, I think this recording would also help the secretary as well in keeping the minutes on, on everything that is, and I understand what you're saying, gentlemen, you're saying that on a legal basis, but maybe that's something that we have to find out. Why is it okay for, you know, TE to put this on their, on their training or for the training or their covering, but how, how do we implement it into the district? You know, if we're going to go forward, we just move everything forward. I mean, eventually, we, we need to get, you know, up to speed with everybody else.
I think we need to have Tazby write a local policy, have a first reading, second reading, and then decide on it.
Just have, have some background over it.
And you guys, and this is, and hold on, Mr. President, please, let me have the floor in this one. This is what I'm talking about with this policy and procedures. The mentality is just Cap Tazby write this up, but if it's the local policy and we're in charge of it, why aren't we doing the inputting into our own local policies? We're going to- We're going to Tasby to go do something else for us, so somebody else can tell us what to do. Guys, when I've called Tasby, they said, man, I can't believe y'all follow our guideline all the way to the letter. Y'all have no change whatsoever in your, in your policies, and it's like, that's a little disturbing. You know, I mean, it's like, we're just exactly just listening to everything that's coming down, and we're not changing this, but we're expecting growth in our classrooms, and we don't even change the way we do things here.
I'm going to ask Chrissy, Chris, Chrissy, do we change local policy with Tasby on first readings and second readings? When we have all those strikeouts?
We have updates, we, we will make changes.
Exactly.
A few changes.
A few, not many, it's far and few in between.
One word or two, far and few in between.
Yeah, it is far and few in between.
Personnel usually has a lot of changes.
You know, I mean, the last, the last one I remember, we changed an A to a was or, um, something really crazy like it was.
We changed a bunch of personnel problems.
Yeah, how about all that personnel stuff that we did about the.
All the extra days they got.
Recovery and the one about people putting the pool.
Well, y'all, y'all asked Chrissy, and she said that's far, and far in between.
Well, when we receive our policy updates, which we have another one sitting on my desk, so when those come in, we check whether any, any changes were made to the policies that they suggested. And I'm going to tell you more times than not, we say no changes adopted as approved. However, there have been times where Ms. Anna Lisona will tell me, hey, we're going to need to make modifications to this policy. It gets placed on the board agenda as an item on its own, not necessarily reference to the policy that we're updating at that time. It could have come later, am I right?
Because that's usually to personnel.
And usually it's personnel on your leave section, because it's so different and, and based on the desires of the board. We try to keep that consistent, from one local policy to another update.
Well, I don't, I don't understand what, what, well, I guess the big deal is about recording. If it's all going to be stashed away and saved anyway, what's?
It, it can be recorded.
Well, no, I know it can be recorded, but we need to change.
By the proper secretary and what have you. Because that one is supposed to be protected in the courts, the agenda, certified agenda.
Just I guess it.
It can only be released by a court order.
By a court order.
During litigation.
Oh, what, what can only be released by a court order?
The consent agenda item that secretary, board secretary certifies. It's in legal policy.
Yeah, but a board member can see it.
I'm not saying you can't see it.
No, no, you're talking about the public can only get it by court?
Yes.
Yes, I understand that, so that's what I'm saying. So, what's, what's the problem with having it recorded?
I don't like that we don't have a local policy for it.
Well, there, there needs to be a local policy.
There was one, there was, I've always recorded my agendas when I was secretary, and they are all in the packets.
No, talking about a policy, a policy, not, not a guideline.
Anything that we discussed or was done by the secretary, whether policies or not, they all went into the packet after it was written and filed.
Yes, yeah, that's, that's what we're discussing.
So, when you were the secretary, Mr. Lundin, you reported?
Yeah.
You, you wrote it down, it was not recording, recording.
Both, both, because we had our recordings up here.
That, that was not during closed session.
No, 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 we recorded in closed session, we have the recordings. And I recorded in closed session, and that was the policy that we had when I was secretary. And I think, I assume some other ones I served here that I served also did the same thing.
When I was board secretary, I recorded on paper and the tape recorder was turned off during closed session.
You could do it either way.
When I was secretary, it was the same way.
You could do it either way.
The only time we recorded anything in closed session was with the court recorder during some level series.
I mean, open the, the agendas and look at them.
No.
When I was in it.
All right, well, I guess we can all.
Well, we just, what, what we need to do is develop a local policy.
With a lot of restrictions.
Local policy on whether it's going to be recorded or whether it's electronic or paper. We have to decide about that. Then, once you develop the policy, legal has to actually look at it to make sure that it's okay. Yes, it's developed, all local policies are actually developed here. It's just that Tasby goes over them and over them and updates them from what the legislator has said and makes it sink in with the legal policy. These policies have been in place and developed years ago and only been modified. I couldn't tell you when the last time a brand-new local policy was put in place, can anybody? They've only been modified on the ones that we've had.
I believe what you're saying, we would need to get clarification from Tasby.
What I'm saying is if we, we can develop the local policy depending upon which way we go with it. And once we develop the local policy, then we can have it reviewed either by a Tasby representative to see if it matches all the legal and everything else like that. And John, someone had said it's a common practice on recording, though it is not. Not all school districts record closed session. Large school districts, yes, a lot of those are closed, but several of our local ones do not.
Region two representative said it right here.
He's not from region two, he's from region one.
He, he, he's from, but anyway.
Yes, he was from, is he not from region one?
He works for region two, he lives in Edinburgh, region one.
He said he was from region two.
Well, he's, he's from there, but anyway, that's not.
It should be the same.
That's not part of our discussion, yes.
Well, yeah, but he did say here that closed session meetings are normally recorded.
Well, I, I don't recall that.
Well, we, I'm sure we were taping him, so it was open for him.
Anyway.
You can check it.
So, so, is there a recommendation or is, what, what are we going to do with this?
Well, I mean, there's a recommendation paper here, I'm, I mean, I'm not going to look for it, but there it is, recommend it.
Okay, the administration recommends maintaining the current practice by keeping a paper certified agenda.
Do we have a motion or administrative recommendation?
Certainly.
Yeah, do we have a second?
Second, Ted.
Stephen's seconds. Any further comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor? Those opposed? Those in eyes, then the system stays the same. What it means is that motion did not pass, so the system stays this, we do the certified agenda. Okay. The next one is ours, discuss and consider superintendent search process and search firms. I know that you got all that information that was passed on to you. Trying to get it as soon as possible. There was one that was lagging, it did not come in until after I'd gone to work Friday. And after everything had been put together, that was gracious enough for Chrissy to have taken that information and gotten it to you. I know that's a lot of information to be, a lot of stuff. Basic thing is, between all of them, they talk about the same. The only one is Dr. Olivares from the University of Texas. I called and talked to him several times, and he said, well, that's just an example of what a proposal looks like. I said, well, there's anything else? And he sent me a PowerPoint thing that he does if he's, if, if he does a search for someone to get the ball rolling. That was the only thing, but he, I said, I'm going to let the board look at this, and he says, yes, well, that's his proposal. Rest of them, if you noticed going through there, they all had different price ranges, and most of them, they said, well, a flat rate. But if you look past it, it says plus expenses. Now, all of them have varying backgrounds. Some of them are more, I guess you'd, more, I don't want to use the term reputable, but are more recognized and more people used in. The, Dr. Olivares, I got him through Flores and Fuentes, a law firm. Apparently, he does, works with them, that's how I got up with Dr. Olivares. Some of the others, now, you've had an opportunity to look at all of them, everything. And there's just some basic considerations, they all do about the same thing. They all work, and about, if you read all the stuff, they all have about the same process. Very thanks. Now, some of them, Dr. Olivares, he's a single person that does it. Lesser Crass, that's a team, CCR, another team, KBS, I think it's just a couple of them. James Zorera, Consulting, he does most of it himself, but he has enough people backing him. Arrow, uh, they have a two-group of people, and then there's Tasby. Now, if y'all went through everything and looked at that, like I said, most all of them would go through a flat rate, some of them, but some had so much this time, half now, half later. Now, Tasby, since we'd used them the last time, they, uh, it still falls under their guarantee. All they would charge was traveling expenses. Arrow, their fee is flat rate of $7,500, $7,500 plus expenses. So, that, when they say expenses, that's travel, letters, phone calls, advertisement, everything. So, that can mount up. And then, uh, JG Consulting? $20,000, that's the $10,000 upfront and $20,000 at the end. And he had, I think thrown in there, if you read it, somewhere that it's $1,500 for prospective superintendents to come down and interview. Now, that's, that's rather unusual, I've not seen that before. Then Lesser Crass, theirs is $5,000 plus expenses. But if you notice, if you read all the expenses, they put everything in there, so. Yeah, it's kind of like, I'm not, kind of like a used car salesman, right? Tackle the stuff afterwards or a new car salesman. And CCR, they are, uh, that's another one, $6,000 plus expenses. And if you notice, read through their thing, when they were talking about their structure, that also included every little bitty thing. And then, Dr. Olivares, his was $19,700, he came up with that figure, that's his flat rate. But then, the expenses come in behind that. And then, KSB was the highest one, $25,000 base price plus expenses. When you say starting, that means anytime they come down, I had, uh, I think it was CCR said, oh, we can do it by Zoom. And I'm going, I didn't say anything, but he said, we can do it by Zoom and it wouldn't cost as much. And I went, but there's no interaction there, and they said, well, we'll do it any way you want to. Anyway, the biggest thing was when I tried to press them on the expenses side of it, they said, oh, don't worry about that, we'll minimize, we'll work with you on that. I'm going, uh-huh, so, that's just the heads up on it. So, what it boils down to is if you read through everything, went through all the stuff and the recommendations and who they've done searches for, looked on Tasby ISD, looked on TSA, 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 T-A-S-A. Texas, Texas social superintendents, and looked at all their stuff, and looked at their backgrounds, and looked at it. They all do about the same thing in the same way, just a little different. What it boils down is to price. I mean, if you stop and think about it, that's what it does.
And Tasby won't, won't cap off an expense to, with you?
They just normally on their stuff, it's, they did, pressing them on that is just, just normal travel expenses and everything it says. And talking with them, like saying, pressing on it, says, well, it just, like it was with the initial one, we came down one time and then presented it to you, y'all did all the paperwork. We were the ones that went through, how many of them were there? There was a bunch of them, a bunch of pers, prospects and everything. We were the ones that did all that, they just came and presented just a couple of times.
And it would be the same program, Paul, with the filter system and everything else with Tasby?
Oh, but Tasby, there was two of them that had something similar. I think that was KBS, KBS and Tasby. What they've done is on the prospects, they make every one of them do a three-minute video. Now, you see, they think, they think that that works out real well, because you can see the person listen to them, and they answer specific, all answer the same question.
Didn't have videos the last time they did it, right?
No, no videos, that's not.
Because I don't remember a video.
No, that's new, that's something new, but all that includes, so, you know, if we want to, we can pick two or three and interview them, or we can, or we can try to save some money.
Tasby's not charging anything because.
They're just, just expenses, that's all.
And they do one or two trips, it's probably going to be the best way to go.
I, I think so. I mean, I mean, after talking to these people, and then, like Arrow was one of the top-rated ones from talking to people, checking their background, and then when I talked to them, I said, $7,500? I'm sitting there going, and he said, oh, yeah, but expense, I will work with that, and I'm going, yeah, but, you know, and then checking around, that's where, there, some of their expenses, their expenses were charged higher than their flat fee. I'm going, uh-huh, so, but anyway, that's, that's. The only one that just, well, they all had extra, you know, that, Lesser and Crass, that was, that one, they had everything in there, and that would have been, huh. And they're out of, I think they're the ones that are.
A lot of them, North Texas.
Well, yeah, well, this, Olivares was, uh, Austin, KBS was, I think was Manfield. Lesser Crass was Fort Worth. I'm going, golly, and travel time for them, and then it had travel and lodging, and I'm going, oh, my goodness, yeah, so. So, what do y'all want to, y'all want to just go back with Tasby and because, you know?
Well, I didn't have that experience, but if you're saying only came down a couple of times, because we already have them on the other side, we're already funding money to them, so they're not going to, I, I don't think they would just try to take advantage since.
No, they, they, I don't think they would, I don't think they would.
They'd be the cheapest route if we went, I mean, they'd be the cheapest way to go.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be saving money, because I can't see.
Did you rent the window, one of y'all too, last week or last board week, saying that we would be Tasby?
I mean, I think the last board week, we asked if they would honor their free.
Oh, okay, hang on, because I know they came up.
Because I don't remember what they charged originally, it was like $7,000, wasn't it?
They've charged according to the water.
Oh, yeah.
But there was a flat fee for them originally.
Yeah, it was whatever the ADA was, and I cannot recall what that was at the time.
Well, from the, from the, we'd be saving at minimum $6,000 that we know that that one company is willing to do it.
Yeah, it, yeah.
So, we'd be saving the base of at least $6,000, so, I mean, that's a good start right there.
Yeah, well, if y'all agree with. Yeah, well, if y'all agree with it.
The only problem I saw with TASB was that first part, they just get you hundreds of people to look at and just, you know.
We, we can, I asked, I asked all of them about narrowing the search down, however, we, oh, we'll work with you in any way we can. Everyone of them said the same thing. So.
The only thing I'm saying is we're looking to move into a DOI system or for our future, at least have a superintendent that's familiar.
Exactly.
With a DOI.
Well, see, we can tell them that.
Yeah.
You know, when they come down and say, okay, this.
I thought he could do that with the last search because it had a little filter button. Like we were, because to be honest with you, uh, we picked up one that, that Kim had added in at the very end.
Uh, he.
Because, because he filtered, he hit her filter.
He, he was in.
And then we opened it up.
He was in there.
No, no, I know he was in there, but like, he, there was something about the way the order was that she told, because I know we were talking and she said, well, I filtered it down too and I found this guy from that consolidated district.
You could filter him like by how many, how many experience there were, if there was superintendent before, you could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do that, you're going.
Because didn't we eliminate like some out of state people that they were trying to get some stuff in and.
See, we can tell them that, and they can do that.
Tell them that when they come down, right?
Yeah, when they come down.
Tell them what you want.
Okay, so then most of this was what we were talking about, not what we were doing on the computer.
Right.
Okay, I, it just, it seems that so much.
When Felix comes back, I mean, you can see what Chrissy did and what I'd done. I printed out some of this, I started printing up some at the house, I could read it, I had to stop.
I, I'm going to be honest with you, I only read TASB because I, I could have swore when y'all mentioned the free deal, I thought, you know, said, yeah, well, that sounds like the best route. And, and so I thought, oh, well, because they're just telling us who they looked at, but, so I just read TASB. And I put the rest on back.
Y'all told me.
Yeah, I mean, spread the ball to look for something.
Yeah.
No, no, I know, that's what I'm saying, when I looked at it, I said, all right, because these are the people that are applying.
And I said, I'm going to come back with seven and only had six to Friday, late Friday afternoon, and that seventh one finally came in.
Getting close to midnight.
Yeah, we need to move on.
Yeah, we need to move on, we're waiting for Felix right now, so.
I mean, do we need more time to discuss this or are we going to make, make a motion to accept by somebody?
That's, that's up to everybody, that's up to us, if someone wants to make that motion.
It's too late.
I'm going to motion.
Okay, when it comes to, uh, our superintendent search firm, you've had an opportunity to go over all the information and we discussed it lightly in open session, like it is, Ms. Neely told us. Do we have a motion on any recommendation from anyone here?
I'd like to make a motion first to use TASB as our search firm.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Is that tuned in?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries six zero, thank you very much. I will notify TASB of this and then they told me that all the other ones. Let us know that. Okay, consent agenda items, excuse me.
It's the administration's recommendation that the board of trustees approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Thank you. Do we have a second? Jan, second, any comments, questions?
Just one, okay. Hey Philip, on the, on the, an electrical bill, you have a, like with a coordination, but then the dome has a, like a red line charge, is that, that wasn't part of the high school?
No, it's a dome meter and at the time when we built the dome, we did that in the separate contract, it wasn't included under our regular.
Oh, because I thought all of that went by the acreage that we had around the schools, that's where.
No, it just has to do with, you know, when we added a new meter, if we could add it to the existing plan, we did, if we could get a better deal with the line, that's the only reason why we're not the same.
Okay, no, I just noticed that, that just caught me off guard, I didn't realize. I thought that was part of that, that, I don't know, you call it, that integrated, you have, we have, that was just the only question I had.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next section is to go into closed session. I guess, y'all ready to go into it or y'all on a break?
Better go right into it, see what we do.
Okay. The board committee closed meeting as authorized by Texas Health Meeting Act, Texas Department of Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health and Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health, Department of Public Health